24th, 2013 Meeting of East Penn School District Board and School Directors hereby called to order. Please rise and join me in the same.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to announce that Director Sandy Rhodes is with us electronically this evening. He is on the monitor over there and is listening to all the conversations and he will be participating in the discussion via Skype. The first item I have on the agenda tonight is a request to address the board and the first request I have is from Richard L. Musselman of Mayas, Pennsylvania speaking on the budget.
Thank you. It's remarkable to see a no-tax increase, no-programmed budget for the 2013-2014 school year. As I examined the budget changes from the May 13 proposal, I noticed some lessening of payments in certain areas. I hope this does not adversely affect any progress. A lessening of income, a lowering of taxes would not be in the best interest of this or really any other school. I just wondered how many people reduced their car insurance only to find hailstone dips on their car two and a half hours ago? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Musselman. The next request to address the board I have is from Paul Champagne of McCunchee speaking about the budget.
Thank you. I'm here representing the members of the Mayas High School swim team parents and I'd like to thank Coach O'Connor and Athletic Director Romella for the fine job they do year in, year out. I'm under the impression that there was a suggestion made at the last board meeting that $2,000, which is seemingly a small amount, but an important amount of money to be cut from the budget for the school program really related to preventative maintenance. And I find any cuts with respect to preventative maintenance-related activities to be very crude. And I am also under the impression and understanding that the $2,000 in question has already been committed to refurbish the diving boards at the swimming pool. Those diving boards actually left the high school today, as I understand it. And they were needed to be refurbished over two years ago for wear and tear reasons as well as state duties. So in general, I just feel that it's important to maintain the equipment at the swimming pool. A lot of that equipment is aging. A lot of that equipment is very expensive to replace. And I think it would be silly and short-sighted to cut anything related to maintenance of that equipment. In addition, the volunteers at that high school pool really take a lot of the budget pressure off of the school district by volunteering their time and their energy and their money to support the program. So as a parent of a senior swimmer and two swimmers that are up and coming, I hope the board will not cut the budget as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Champagne. The next request to address the board that I have is from Janice Bowman speaking about Common Core.
Hi, I'm Janice Bowman. Thank you Superintendent and the board for allowing me to speak. I've come here tonight to let you know as a budget item, you have a lot of money invested in Common Core. Money coming in, money you spend. But I'm here to tell you that we have a very active group and we will be getting rid of Common Core in Pennsylvania. So in your budget, there are a lot of things that will need to be adjusted in the future because when that Common Core is not here, we're going to go back to state standardized testing. We're going to go back to no data being sent to the feds. We have some laws I just want to tell you about, which hopefully Friday will be a meeting, a press conference. There's a House Bill number 1551 gets rid of Common Core, period. House Bill 1552 gets rid of Common Core in public school, charter schools, private schools. House Bill 1553 is basically telling us we're going to do standardized testing only in the state, state separate. House Bill 1554 says no data mining to federal government. I don't know why they need all our information. They're already stealing it from us through IRS and NSA. Last one, House Bill 1555, which should have been done before this was ever implemented. That says we will have a study, two public meetings, pro and con, before November 1st, 2014. And at that point, if the other four bills didn't get passed, they will decide 90 days later. So if all of you sitting here looking at this, this gets signed, there will be no Common Core standards next year. So I'm hoping that you think about it and cut wasting that money on all these budget computers. And Altona is so good to have 19 IT people or 20, but we laid off 400 teachers. That's what Common Core is. So I'm hoping you get serious and kick the Common Core out, get back to teaching and not to brainwashing these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request I have to address the board is from Carla Hess of Whitehall about Common Core.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Just recently, we learned of and were concerned even outraged about the collection of massive amounts of our own private personal information being collected by the government. Should we not be equally or even more concerned about the data collection and data sharing of our children and grandchildren's personal private information, data collection that is taking place and will expand enormously under Common Core? This data collection has been going on insidiously for a number of years, growing increasingly in tight and amount and becoming more federal government-centered and controlled. In 2008 and 2011, amendments to FERPA, which was supposed to protect the privacy of education records, gave third parties, including private companies, increased access to student data. In 2008, the amendments to FERPA expanded the definition of school officials who have access to student data to include contractors, consultants, volunteers, and other parties to whom an educational agency or institution has outsourced institutional services or functions that ordinarily have given to employees of the school. In 2011, amendments allowed the release of student records for non-academic purposes and undermined parental consent provisions. The changes also promote the public use of student IDs that enable access to private educational records. These amendments are critical to supporting initiatives like Common Core that depend on collection of student data to monitor implementation and measure success. Schools across the country will contract with third-party vendors to provide products, programs, and services in order to meet the Common Core requirements. And government agencies and researchers will be mining student information for studies and databases. What lies ahead for student privacy when private companies, government agencies, and a wide range of researchers have greater access to student data and information? The National Data Collection Model, this is the federal request for what ought to be collected, represents 400 data points schools should collect and it is a comprehensive, non-proprietary inventory that can be used by schools, local educational agencies, states, vendors, and researchers. Our children are being used as pawns, victims of an educational system that calls itself child-centered, but is actually centered on money and politics. Some questionnaires include items asking what newspapers or magazines are found in students' homes and questions on parents' health or finances. The student who divulges on a questionnaire in school which magazines or modern conveniences and medications are in his home or the vacation spots most frequented by family members has no idea that this lifestyle data can be cross-matched with responses relating to social attitudes, worldviews, religion, and politics. Today's questionnaires and screening instruments amount to psychological profiling. Federal initiatives keep providing incentives to states to create laws institutionalizing mass psychological profiling of your children. I urge you-
Ms. Hess, can you wind it up, please?
Yes, I am right now. I'm at my last sentence. I urge you, please be alert, educate yourselves, seek information, be curious and persistent in the search of the truth. Thank you.
The next request I have to address the board is from Matthew Mull of McCunchee on the swim team budget.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to once again address the board. I just want to say that as Paul said earlier, there are a number of us that would like to be here. There is a swim meet tonight for EMAC, which is why I'm dressed like I am. We came, or I came directly from there. Parents of the swim team are very involved. As Mr. Champagne alluded to earlier, we volunteer a lot. We really try to minimize the burden of the cost of any activities on the school district. And one of the things that Coach O'Connor teaches these kids is discipline and endurance and the ability to pace yourself. And I think he exhibits those qualities as well, just the way he is a good steward of the money that he's given, you know, penny-wise to trying to be, not be penny-wise in pound full, which maintains equipment rather than let it go spoil and then have to be replaced at a much higher cost down the road. Another thing, as Vice President in my company, you know, we call it budget finching. You know, you get your budget and you spend as much as you can as quick as you can before someone else does and then you've spent yours and somebody who uses their money more judiciously gets shafted at the end. And we try very hard to put a stop to that. And Coach O, in this case, has tried, you know, I shouldn't think he should be penalized for using that kind of discipline and endurance and just trying to keep his equipment up and running as much as possible. So I'm just going to end my comments there and just let you know that the Warsaw parents wish they could be here, but unfortunately we can't and just thank you for your time. Thank you.
The next request to address the board I have is from Marie Miller of West Coast Ville speaking about grass not being cut.
My problem is about grass cutting. I called the Loma Cada Mass High School about cutting the grass by Loma Canji School. I lived in that area for 40 years and the grass has always been cut. It's the past two years you don't do it. I understand there's no money, but I don't mind if you don't cut the grass in a field or anything. But right there by me where I have it hairs all the time, it looks like junk. And I understand it's, the ordinance is 10 to 12 inches high. It is much higher than that. And since I didn't get any answer from the Mass Educational District, this is the only place I could come to. So I wish you would give me some answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Musselman. The last request I have to address the board this evening is a Lamont Sea Musselman of Palmerton and McCunchee funding for meters fitted to students attending Ira Middle School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For a long week time to express some concerns I have. I am the maternal grandfather of a child that is attending the Ira Middle School this year. She came from the Little Lane School in the fifth grade and upon her nanny and granddad myself speaking to her, I found out some information that I'd like to have respectfully requested reply to, whether it be written or otherwise. I spoke to her, I said, "How was school this year?" She said, "Oh, it was great. We got measured for a meter." I said, "Excuse me?" She says, "Yeah, they got this meter that they put on us and they tie around something that to monitor our heart." And I said, "For what?" She says, "Well, for PTS." I says, "Did everybody get one?" She says, "Each one got one individually." So in line with budgeting, I like budgeting, I'd like to know what the cost would be. I looked over the budget and I couldn't see anything about the meters on there. It says, I'd like to know the cost, where the funding, what describes it here, where that funding came from, wherein the budget it is, who mandated these meters, what data is being collected, why do they require individual units for each child, and who has access to the data that is being collected? I respectfully ask for reply on that and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I have no other requests to address the board this evening, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please? Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? None appearing? All those in favor of approving minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll now move on to item 4.1, the report of the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Tom Seifert.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We'll certainly follow up with inquiries regarding your concern, Mr. Musselman and Mrs. Miller, Fairway Court. We'll check that out and see who's supposed to be cutting that grass. Couple things I want to talk about and perhaps they're timely based on some of the comments we received tonight. In your board packets, a sensuate copy of the-
Dr. Seifert, I think the first item, 4.1, is the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent.
Well, very, yeah, perhaps.
We'll do the district update number two.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let's do the motion first, the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent, which is actually the addendum motion, 4.1.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on that? Mr. Earnshaw?
I'd just like to express my appreciation to Mrs. Campbell for the service she's given to the district. She's been an exemplary teacher, principal, and now assistant to the superintendent. And now that she's received her superintendent credentials from the state, I'm personally delighted that we can appoint her as an Assistant Superintendent for the district. I have every confidence that she'll continue to provide us with the outstanding energy, dedication, and expertise that we've come to expect. And I appreciate all that she's done for us so far and I'm really looking forward to seeing her expanding contribution here. Thanks, Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. I believe, is somebody down here?
No.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Bursell, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Donchus.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polatano.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Heine.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Nine, nine.
I would like to say a couple words. Well, congratulations, Kristen. And throughout my experience as Superintendent, I really have been blessed with working with some outstanding individuals and I certainly put Kristen in that category. When I came to East Penn, I had two outstanding people serving as Assistant Superintendents. We still have Dr. Torma and we have Mr. Nolan. And Mr. Nolan was a great loss to this district. However, when one gets offered a superintendency, one should answer that call, but that's what one of us to do. And Greg has been very successful, being Superintendent of Rarapan School District in New Jersey. But that left a gaping hole in the organization. And when I looked around our administrative team, there was only one choice at that point. And I know I came back to the board at that point and gave my recommendation and you endorsed me at that point and I went and recruited Kristen. And I think she was stunned a little bit when I went to visit her about coming to Central Office. But at that time, I told her I felt confident in her abilities to come on board and make a difference in the school district and she truly has. She does an amazing job, but what I think is most outstanding about Kristen is that people respect her and people follow her. And I know that nothing is going to change with their work ethic. Getting this title doesn't mean anything at all. It's all about doing wonderful things for the staff and for the students. And I think it's really an honor to have her being Assistant Superintendent, we don't have numbers here, be. And I have a full team of excellence and if I'm out of district, I have full confidence that either Dr. Torma or Mrs. Campbell can operate linked to districts. So Kristen, congratulations. Come on and be recognized. Okay, because now we proceed with the district update. Thank you, Mr. Ballard. I'm sorry, it's a little exciting about that issue. But I definitely get to come on some. Last week, Dr. Torma, Mrs. Campbell, I had an opportunity to travel to Harrisburg and partake in a workshop and it was really well-intended on school-level objectives. And I think I put the, I know I put the new tool and a series of explanation points in your packets. And it's our intent to come back to you in August and spend some time going over the school personnel, the school profile, and also taking you inside the school-level objectives. And I think for the audience, and again, I know there's some Common Core people here, but I have to tell you that unless there's a major change in philosophy from the State Department, I'm a commissioned officer in state of Pennsylvania, it's my obligation to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And if you look closely at the documents we gave to you, you will see that one of the things that each and every teacher must do in this district regardless, regardless of if you're an AP Calculus teacher or an art teacher or kindergarten teacher, you must write at least one measurable objective. Coming up in the future act would be starting not this September, but it would be implemented following September. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do with preparing people because there's an issue of what is a measurable objective. So one of the things that our principals are going to have to do is do some in-service on recognizing what is a suitable objective. And I think the three of us came away knowing that we're going to need to spend some time with our administrative staff. And then there's the prospect of working with our actual faculties, probably the second part of next year, to make sure that they understand and alleviate any fear that people have regarding the development of objectives. But one of the things that teachers are going to have to do is tie those objectives to one of the Common Core standards. And that's in the documents right now. And so for those of you who are working tirelessly to end the Common Core, you have a lot of work to do. A lot of changes have to be made in a relatively short period of time because this is in the documents. And all that test data is part of the teacher evaluation system that also will be implemented the following, the following fall. The component we're talking about comprises 35% of the teachers' evaluation. So it's a significant block of data and we're going to, as I said before, spend a lot of time in it. And unfortunately, I cannot calculate the staff development time that we have. And quite frankly, I don't have time to go back and redo the budget at this point, but I can tell you that I think one of the surprising things about next year is, once we work on our principals, is the time we're going to have to spend on having faculty meetings and after-school meetings to make sure that everybody's up to speed on knowing what they have to do. So it's going to be a challenge. I think the real challenge for us is not letting this work get in the way of what we want to accomplish with instructional practices in our district. We spent a lot of fun developing our fundamental instructional practice chart. We believe in those. We had a great session last week with Dr. Wilman, all our administrators getting together, spent all day looking at effective questioning in the classroom. I think all of us came away invigorated, excited about the work we're doing. And moving forward, we're going to have all put this in perspective and see if we can meld all of these requirements together so that we stay the course in doing great things for our teachers and more importantly, for our students. The only other thing I want to talk about is I know we have a lot of work to do regarding the budget. With your permission, I would like to forward a letter to Lehigh County Commissioners regarding the TIP, a secret that our board has voted 6-2 in favor, 6-2-1 in favor of the TIP. I'm so pleased that Lower McCunchee Township took action last Thursday night. As you may or may not know, the Commissioners will be voting, could be voting on Wednesday, I don't know that for sure. I won't be there, but I put together a letter, I know Mr. Dr. Barker was questioned at one of the meetings about what we may do with the TIP revenues. And I put together my thoughts, my perspective as a Superintendent of what we might be doing with the revenues. And it should be no secret, there should be no surprises in that letter. It's exactly what we would do with any revenues. Certainly, we have challenging times coming up. I'll save those comments for the budget, but you all understand special education funding is a powerful issue in our district. The fact that we may have some development, I'm going to share that with you in the budget process, that may lead us to having to hire more teachers, not necessarily this year, although that could happen. I'm going to report to that to you in our budget presentation. But certainly going forward in 2014, 2015, what we would get about $590,000 of revenue, I can see ourselves needing some staff members if kids start coming back to the school district. And the other thing I think that most people forget about is the developer has put in escrow about $3 billion to help support athletic fields for Lower McCunchee. And that certainly will end the debate for us if we ever have to come back and have the issue of baseball and softball fields come back to us. Certainly, we would have to make a presentation ever to you again about those kind of fields and that certainly would save our taxpayers some money. So that's the letter with your permission I'd like to send off so that they get it in time for the meeting. And I would only say that if people feel passionately about this issue, you ought to let them know one way or the other. That's what democracy is all about. That's why I have my report.
All right. First thing we'll have to ask is there any objection to Dr. Seifert sending a letter on behalf of himself as the Superintendent of the East Penn School District? Ms. Donchus.
And do I understand that this is a personal letter from you or are you representing the classes and school board?
Well, I feel that the school board is behind me on this. Do all of you vote 6-2 to vote?
I do not support it. I did support the votes and I can't support sending a letter.
I understand.
Anything I would favor sending a letter not being okay?
Mr. Stolz?
Tom, you know, I was at the meeting, we all attended, last annual mission meeting and there was a bit of new information that came to light regarding the project, including the report of Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, which to my surprise, they're certainly not what I would call a right-wing ideological organization. They absolutely penned the idea. And I don't think that we should be giving you permission to recommend this unless there's one of those.
Well, do you want to make a motion to that back? No. I'll move to support Dr. Seifert.
And I'm a seconded.
Yes, we're seconded. We'll now have discussion on the motion. Mr. Polatano?
I originally expected because there was contradictory information, it wasn't actually a motion. And it all escaped light. And I went to the Commissioners' meeting, the law, the planning meeting, a lot more information became available. And that persuaded me to go ahead and vote. And I think we're not doing a due diligence unless we do all look into the information before we go on with this. We got a developer that had said he could do this development without the TIP. I would think that's true, that would be better to have a plan, say, yeah, plan. It would be better for the taxpayers and we can have the TIP. You probably do consider that different. would do the same thing with the TIP. I feel very strongly that we should fold up and re-vote, have all the latest information with due diligence, if we have to, with due diligence, like we have today. I would like to make a motion.
Can you go?
I'm not sure if you can, because if you were not on the opposing side, you abstained.
And good, good. You didn't talk.
We'll have to have the departmentary here. Consider the name of vote.
I maintain that you cannot vote.
Will you? I'm not voting.
I believe it. It's have to be on the prevailing side of the motion.
That's correct.
If there is a motion for reconsideration.
We have a motion already on the floor of a different type, and we can reconsider your reconsideration motion in just a moment. Let's first talk about the motion to permit Dr. Seidenberger to send this letter. Is there further discussion?
I'd just like to respond to some of the comments Mr. Pollicano made. That particular developer made a lot of comments. He first said he was going to sue us if this TIP was illegal, and threatened to sue us for approving it. He then said that the developer was, that the township couldn't support a third retail property in the area, and that in a way the developer, Chris Phillips, was pulling existing tenants out of his existing property. He then said that these tenants were being lured away by lower rates. And in fact, my understanding is that these properties in the TIP zone are going to be assessed as a luxury resort, a premium retail space. So my expectation is the tenants of the new property are going to be paying higher taxes, not lower taxes. And then finally, he said, well, I would look without the TIP. And I think that's contradicting his earlier statement that the area cannot support three shopping malls. So I think there is a lot of new information, but there's a lot of contradictory information in that particular developer's comments. I don't think, I think we did do quite a bit, I personally did quite a bit of due diligence on this project, and still, having seen all the new information, I was also at the county commissioners' meeting, I'm still strongly in favor of continuing the TIP and in favor of Dr. Seidenberger sending this letter to the county commissioners.
Mr. Urnschau?
When this, the issues were raised concerning traffic concerns and other issues, people had issues with over the proposed Hamilton Crossings development. I remembered reading in the Morning Call several years ago, some discussion on the speed limit. So I did a little searching on the web and found the column. It was a Road Warrior column from October of 2007 that was talking about the speed limit. And interestingly, you know, some people are saying it's a 45 mile-per-hour speed limit, it should be 55. And the comment in, of the columnist in the Morning Call said, though it might seem unlikely, there's evidence to back up the 45 always claimed, so always a 45 mile-per-hour speed limit. Some people said, oh, it was designed as a 55 mile-per-hour, and people said, no, it was always designed as a 45 mile-per-hour. And this is from Don Lurch, a retired PNDOT engineer, who was at this time working in the private sector. He said, my recollection from the design meetings says it was always supposed to be 45 miles per hour. It was intended to be a boulevard-type design, not a high-speed expressway. Then they went on to say that the road was not intended to be a true bypass, like the Kutztan bypass, with the sole purpose of allowing through traffic to avoid existing Hamilton Boulevard. Though that was one of its functions, the road also was designed to promote business development along its own new path, as well as to interact with the commercial district along Hamilton. And that's why there are all the signalized intersections on the bypass. They did say that the bypass originally, the public was calling it a bypass. PNDOT was insisting it wasn't a bypass, but the name bypass stuck, and so they continued to call it that. But it's really interesting that the original design, according to the Morning Call, which may or may not be correct, no offense to the Morning Call, is that it was always intended to promote business. And now they're saying, well, no, we don't really mean it, not, at least not this kind of business. There was never a discussion, we only want to promote certain types of businesses. Now that a rather substantial development's been proposed, now they're saying, well, we didn't really mean it. So, and then, of course, Lower McCunge Township has disputed that fact. I don't think we'll ever have 100% of people either in favor of or opposed to the bypass. I think the comments I continue to get are, when are we going to get a Costco? And Whole Foods is coming now, too. How neat is that? I continue to support the project. I believe it does provide benefits to the, all the taxing bodies, and it provides a nice shopping arrangement for people who care to shop at these stores. From what I've read, the wages at Costco are substantially higher than typical retail, an average in the mid-40s. That's, that's a phenomenal wage for someone who doesn't necessarily have advanced education. The project has, has been given a lot of positive commentary by most of the people. There are some people who have claimed things like, oh, government shouldn't be involved in picking winners and losers and making handouts, but there wasn't this up for the Weisenberg TIP two years ago. It's now in full more development up on Route 100 north of Tillman Road. So it's, it's interesting that now they're, they're claiming this is a bad thing, but two years ago, no one had anything to say about it that I, that I've been able to ascertain. So I certainly support us sending this letter. I don't support us revisiting our decision. And I appreciate your, your initiative writing this Dr. Seidenberger. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Stoltz?
Meeting that two weeks ago, the county commissioners decided to defer voting on it for two more weeks Wednesday. It seems likely they're going to defer again. There will be new information that comes out of the state speeding of Lehigh County Commissioners of certain plan. So I think before we make any recommendation at all, we should wait until we have more information. Without it, we're going to have this meeting on Wednesday. I will be attending. And with that, I make the motion to defer the vote on this until our July 8 meeting.
I second that.
That's a motion to table. It's a motion to table. The word, the very certain. Okay. So it does not require a vote to come off the table that I've got to make. All right. I believe though that there's no discussion on that. I think you're correct. Ms., do you proceed on that basis? Ms. Bertle, will you call a roll, please?
Yes, it is available.
It is available?
Only as to the propriety of post paper.
Well, my name is the propriety of post paper. I don't, there's any impropriety necessarily.
Then if only I expressed the opinion that the commissioners will defer again, they will not vote at the next meeting. If there's ever a body that kicked the can down the road, it's those votes. So I don't see the point of, of prolonging this conversation. I voted in support of the TIP to begin with. I voted in support of Dr. Seidenberger sending a letter in support of his opinion and the majority of the board. I don't see the point of extending this conversation. It's going to be a long enough meeting like it is.
Give that's to the propriety of the motion, so we'll sort of leave it at that. We're now voting on a motion to defer to the next meeting. A motion on whether Dr. Seidenberger can send this letter. Ms. Bertle, will you call a roll, please? Affirmative vote will defer to the next meeting.
Mr. Urnschau?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
No.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
No.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hye?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
All right, we're back to the original motion about sending this. I haven't had a chance to comment yet. I will just comment about some of the comments made about this supposed new information. I read some of the accounts of this supposed new information. I think it's very easy to make gratuitous comments about what you would or wouldn't do without, especially if one doesn't consider the track record of the person who's making them. I looked at the particular situation, and I don't find those comments credible. I don't think that it would be wise to assume that those comments are the absolute truth. And until I see a bonded statement of a letter of intent with money behind it saying that it's available to do something, I'm not going to believe that it's credible. So I support Dr. Seidenberger sending this letter. We'll now proceed to a vote. Ms. Bertle, will you call a roll, please? This vote is to authorize Dr. Seidenberger to send the letter for us.
I just wanted to say, I'm not against the developer. I just feel that we got a chance to get word back to the developer somehow. And I think it leaves us to try to go after it. I think the person, the developer that presented Stoltz has issued letters, I know, to Lower McCunge Township, and also, it's on the record. And the other developer, the current developer right now, with his friend's vote, he had to throw his way, and he's contradicted himself a few times, too. So I think on both sides of the package, we should explore what this new person says he can do without the TIP. Because it may be worthwhile benefiting the schools. And I do that.
Are you done, Ms. Pollicano?
Yeah.
Okay, then Ms. Donches, once again.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Walker that this discussion raises four questions, and therefore I feel that that is reason to take another look at this. I would, I concur with Mr. Pollicano that this, you know, I want the answers to begin with, but this developer, if a developer would develop this land, whether now or because the TIP gets voted down by the other entities, another developer can come in and build something using their own money, not taking a TIP, not taking grants, not taking subsidies. At which point, when whatever it is would get built out, we will get 100% of that tax and not have to give away 50% for the next 20 years. I think that's very, very strong. Such, that's, if you know, if you get a $7 million bond, and you have to pay $13 million just, and you're giving 50% of it away while that's being paid off, where if we wait it out, just wait it out, because now so much of research has been done that we know this land can be developed if somebody will put the money in to develop it. So let somebody do it on their own dime, wait it out, what's the rush? You know, Lower McCunge Township gets unordained numbers of variances to make things happen. So I just, whether it's, you call it, whether it's a ruse, no, you call it building on your own dime, used, not using public money for a private person to build. And if we let it go and wait until that private person comes along, we will be better off in the long run.
Are you done, Ms. Donches? Anyone else? Ms. Bertle, will you call a roll, please? This is to authorize Dr. Seidenberger to send the letter, which is for us.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Urnschau?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hye?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Six ayes, three nays.
All right, that was the end of Dr. Seidenberger's report, so we'll move on to item three personnel. And I have been asked by Mr. Stoltz first to hold the one item of conferences about Common Core, and we also have an addendum. So this is the addendum minus the Common Core conference. And I have a motion, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Now appearing, Ms. Bertle, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Hye? Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Urnschau?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Will now be the motion to authorize the educational conference expense for the Common Core Conference? So moved. The motion is seconded, discussion? Mr. Stoltz?
Dr. Seidenberger, could you tell us a little bit about what this conference is, what it's for, etc.?
Sure. This is a national conference. We have one of our outstanding IFB teachers, the superintendent. As I alluded earlier in the meeting, teachers are going to be very responsible in the key, some of the key concepts going forward are going to be assessment and analysis of student learning. So let's let me talk a moment about the highlights of this particular conference. First learning outcome will be examining student mathematical practices and the teacher instructional assessment shifts necessary to significantly impact student learning. I think that's kind of an eye, and I don't see anything particularly wrong with that goal. Second goal, learn how to call on students to apply complex reasoning to world, world issues and challenges. We just spent the better part of the day last week going on effective questioning techniques in the classroom. That's certainly, the words common and core did not come up in our work last Monday, I can tell you that. Acquire strategies proven to help students develop critical thinking demanded by the Common Core. Well, although, and I said this publicly, the Common Core does demand, put a premium on critical thinking skills. And by the way, there's nothing dirty about those words, thinking skills. They're part of our district mission statement. Enable students to write logical arguments based on substantive claims, sound reasoning, and relative evidence. And again, I think that fits right in with what we're trying to accomplish here with our mission statement. And that was developed about five years ago now. Next goal is to identify classic contemporary informational texts with the complexity necessary to achieve the analysis, research, and comprehension insights of the standards. And again, at least in the area of reading, I don't see a significant issue with some of those standards. And again, collect tips and tools for supporting and monitoring the implementation of this standard. So moving forward, these are going to be valuable tools. And again, I repeat, until we get information from the PDE that we're no longer involved in the Common Core game, I'm required under law to make sure that our district is moving in that way. So I hope those answer your questions. We are not paying for this conference with local dollars, a part of the federal, a part of that actually state improvement, I mean, I'm sorry, Alberta's school improvement plan, we're paying for it, we have additional funds to do that. Title I. Yeah. Well, it's not quite Title I, it's, it's a part of that, school improvement.
I was going to do one of my questions. I, I figured it was probable grant, right? Would you classify this conference as being to help us work with implementing Common Core, or is it just a sort of Common Core, kind of a rah-rah, yay conference?
Oh, I, I, look, I don't know anybody in this district who's on to a rah-rah conference regarding the Common Core. Just like, now I can laugh. Look, whether you like it or not, this has been a lot of work for us, and we've invested a lot of time, good, bad, or indifferent. And I don't think any of our teachers who have been in Common Core sessions have come back and said, this is a rah-rah, this is a major shift for our organization. Just ask people, teachers, who are going to be teaching new mathematics in their classrooms next year. The expectations are going to be enormous. So I, I would fairly see that, that the name Loschinsky is going to have a rah-rah conference. I think she's going to learn more about how, on a practical level, we can implement this. And then again, going back, measurement is going to be a big issue, not necessarily standardized tests. Part of the, if you look very closely at the work I gave to you, So one of the things that we're gonna have to debate internally is what makes a sound and effective assessment piece. We're gonna need to spend a lot of time this next year, and I'm anxious to see what Mene brings back from this conference. In fact, as you know, I'm leaving tomorrow for Congress, and I personally have never heard Charlotte Danielson before, and if you know anything about the teacher effectiveness, 50% of the teacher's evaluation is based, is based on the work of Dr. Danielson, so I'm anxious to hear her on Thursday, and I wanna bring back some ideas from her, how we're gonna implement the Danielson part of that teacher effectiveness tomorrow.
Theoretically, what else does the Title I conference need?
Feature training, that's what most of the grants are for.
Is this school improvement?
Yes.
School improvement funds?
Okay. We wrote a plan, improvement plan, and this certainly comes under the guise of that, as far as teacher training.
And as, as long as we're discussing Common Core, I'd just like to quickly, something that was brought up during the audience question, question session. I know the monitors that you was talking about, we had them back about, oh, seven years ago when I was in high school, they're heart monitors for gym class, nothing more insidious than that, just trying to make sure that we get our heart rates up to a proper level, it's part of what it's based on, and that is something that was being done long before Common Core was ever, ever discussed. I just heard about this in passing at a Lee County Public Opinion meeting about a week ago. I was going to ask you about it, but that seems to be...
I can assure you it's not a biometric, though.
Yes, yes, that's what was related to me, and that's why I needed to...
But I can assure you, laughing, it's not a biometric.
Don't worry, I'll clear it up on the blog later.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I totally, I mean that. I don't know how these stories get started, but, you know, this is why people ought to check out, and get the facts straight before they spread stuff.
We need to keep Jermaine on the house. I just, as long as we're on the topic of Common Core, I wanted to ask about that, and then I have one final, that's, I suppose, an amendment. I believe that this is approved with the, with the requirement that a presentation be made in public to the board after this conference is over.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have an amended motion, we'll be discussing on the amended motion. Any comments on the amended motion? Mr. Earnshaw.
Dr. Seidenberger, do you have any concerns or reservations about having a presentation?
I, I think it's more appropriate, I think the board's asked us to provide written evaluations on conferences, I don't have a problem asking Berzel to provide a written document rather than coming out and doing the first item. I think in some regards, maybe she gets singled out a little bit, but I don't see any reason why we can't ask for written reports and amend that to you. I think that's more appropriate, my own personal opinion.
And is any written report sufficient to amend your motion, Mr. Stoltz?
I think this is gonna be an issue that is discussed in the community quite a bit in the next several, I know some is going to be having a presentation on it, and I know several other local conferences that make sense about it. I think that the public would benefit from a public presentation.
I believe it the way it is. Any further commentary on the amended motion? Besides...
Hold on, let me get here.
The name LaShinsky.
So what happens then if we have her, one of us?
It's gonna be nervous number one.
Thank you, that's what I'm getting at, a B, extra pay?
No, no.
What happens, if you just volunteer?
No, but I think the question would be, why am I, why am I being?
Singled out.
Single out for dishonor.
Why? I think, I think I'm feeling that a written aspect and material from there is sufficient, and if we have questions, then we can give them to Ms. Berzel and get them answered that way. I'm not feeling too, I don't know, I just, I don't really feel it's fair to put somebody on the spot. I'm sorry, I just, I, I think a written one is sufficient, and I also feel that we're mature enough to ask questions via email, and if we feel that it's something that needs to be spoken about a little bit more, that should be up to Dr. Seidenberger and his team to do the presentation, instead of pointing her out. That's just my personal opinion. So if you would like a presentation on it, I think it's something that we can request as a board, I just don't think it should be fur.
Ms. Fuller.
And I think it would be fair to expect that as time goes on and these new curriculums are being integrated, that we'll be hearing about it thoroughly, as it's being implemented here. So I think that the, the questions that are being asked will, in time, be answered. And I agree with Ms. Ay, I think it's, expecting a bit much to ask an Alberta's teacher to come back from a conference and make a presentation here. I'm looking forward to her sharing what she has learned with her fellow teachers, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about it from our administration, but I don't think this is something we can do in August if that happens.
I would like to also share some concerns, I don't think it's a good policy to try to enthrall our teaching staff in public controversies. If we want to have anything presented on that particular type of subject, it should be done by the administration. One of the things, which job description has to interface with the public on issues of public concern. Our individual teachers are there to instruct in the classroom not to be presenting to the board of school directors. So I do not support having a public flagellation of anyone who are teachers over politically.
Are we done, Ms.? Mr. Stoltz?
I object to your character intervention, but that is called a flagellation, I, I'm not, I'm not holding this teacher accountable for what she's saying at all. Fact is, she's the one going to this conference, she'll be the one receiving the information directly. Dr. Seidenberger, no disrespect intended, you and the administration will not be the one, she will, which is my ass.
Further comments? Ms. Donches?
I would agree, I, I, I would like, personally, I would like a presentation to the board for a lot of the conferences, and, and the administration, and the teachers too. Even if it were to be free for the highlight, everything that, given the importance of this curriculum, and the shift in the school, that they, the position should be there.
Dr. Seidenberger? I correct you, please, I'll, Common Core standards is not a curriculum, they are standards. We get to pick our curriculum based around the standards, it's not, we're not buying a curriculum off the shop. That's one of the common myths about this, and I think all of us as board members, I would, we should make sure the public understands that it's not a curriculum, they are standards, the guidelines.
Mr. Earnshaw? It's important to recall, too, this conference is about educational strategies, not about the Common Core, so there's a tremendous amount of misunderstanding about the Common Core. Based on the research that I've done, which is in progress, Common Core does not require teacher evaluations, it does not require data collection and submission to the federal government, it does not require additional standardized testing, it is simply a framework of learning objectives that can and are adopted by states, and then often customized and passed along to school districts to form a curriculum around them. Now, there are also Chapter Four regulations that the Pennsylvania Department of Education's implementing, in conjunction with the Race to the Top grant, the federal grant program, and also with No Child Left Behind. It's No Child Left Behind, and it's Race to the Top, and it's the Chapter Four regulations that are about increased testing, data collection and analysis, teacher evaluation, that's not the Common Core. They're different, they're separate, and those issues certainly need to be addressed and debated. I think I support, in this case, having a written report from this teacher and a Common Core presentation would be much more appropriate, coming from the administration, including our curriculum department. Because there are ones that have to bear the brunt of forming our curriculum around these standards, they can clear up what is and what is not included, and can also help us go through that tangled web of regulations that is all too conveniently lumped under a soundbite, stop the Common Core. We have to understand what is and what is not, and what parts of the Common Core are truly the Common Core, and what are ancillary things that are being sometimes lumped together in the common vernacular. So I would certainly appreciate more information down the road, but the timing is appropriate from our administration, but in this case, from this individual attending this conference, I agree that a written report is more than sufficient to give us the information we need.
The motion currently on the floor is for this feature to be approved for this conference of the rise over to make a report to the board, public report to the board, that's what we are currently voting on.
What about the approval of the rest of the expenses?
We already did that.
Okay, so that was pulled out, that was removed, pulled out.
And just for clarification, if the amended motion fails, we'll revert to the original motion, which was simply to approve.
All righty. Anybody else? Ms. Berzel, will you call a roll, please? This is on the motion to require a public report in order to approve the expense.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Nay.
Mr. Rose.
No.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
No.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Dr. Walker.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Six nays, three ayes.
All right, we revert to the original motion. Any further comment on it? This is to approve the expenditure for the educational conference. Ms. Berzel, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Nay.
Ms. Fuller.
Nay.
Mr. Pollock.
Nay.
Dr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Nay.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Six nays, three ayes.
All right, I believe that moves us now to item 4.4, which is the ticket pricing for sports. Do I have a motion, please? Discussion? Ms. Donches?
Yes, I would like to move to amend the motion that all district employees and school board directors pay the full admission price.
Second. Okay, Ms. Donches, you want to explain that?
Actually, I have one question. I noticed on the budget that there were revenues from the admission to the board of basketball and admission to the football of each of $4,000, and I wondered if that is as a result of changing to the policy. I noticed that it was in bold that the, when it was paid off, they did not pay for the football for the payoff payment, and I wondered, yeah?
No, those, those, those revenues or estimates of anticipated crowds, again, they're based... I, first, I'll give an example, we have no idea what the weather's gonna be like this September, October, so, Mr. Romello does, does recant with the staff and put those estimates in, and we see them break, if you don't. Let's try to hire to be more accurate next year, I don't think it's based on one particular factor.
Is there any data captured, do we know how many employees the district can manage of this?
I have no idea.
I can support it if there's some data, it would be interesting to know how much revenue we're giving up by providing this to the public.
Ms. Donches? Mr. Earnshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, I have no problem with paying for my own admission to these events, most of the time when I'm at a football game, I'm working in the bandstand selling snacks anyway, or if it's an away game, I'm chaperoning the students, and the chaperones aren't charged anyway, so, to me, if I have to pay a few extra dollars for the season, that really doesn't bother me. What I am concerned about is if we start requiring our district employees to pay, it's, if putting up any kind of barrier, I think, is a detriment to the culture and the, really the feel of the games. I've been to just about every football game for the last four years, having a daughter in the band, that I sometimes say, get those football players off the marching band field, they have a lot of work things to do, but what I've noticed is the, the students see and recognize their assistant principals, and they see and recognize their teachers there, and they are grateful for their support. I've noticed many times the assistant principals calming down an unruly senior section of students. Having them there, I think, has been a great benefit to the district, and if we say, well, now you have to pay for the privilege of coming and trying to be a control rod for that nuclear reaction that we call senioritis, I don't think that serves any of us well in the hopes that we might scrape a few extra dollars in tickets, that can easily be wiped out in the end of having to hire just one additional security guard for one game at, you know, at homecoming time or something. So I think this is penny wise and pound very foolish to entertain such a, such a notion, and I certainly do not support the amended motion.
I've been a superintendent, it's gonna be my 26th year next year, but I've been superintendent in two, what I call, sports fanatic districts. Not that it may as not, but certainly when it comes to people taking stuff really seriously, brick, and certainly, we all know Folsburg, New Jersey. I can tell you, the attitude in all the districts I've led is, we have emissions for basketball games and for football games, to pay our basic expenses, and the other natters upon us. In Folsburg, we made money because we sold television rights to Easton Beaver game. That, that covered our expenses for all football seasons. That's a little different than what we're talking about here, so, I think our attitude should be that we want as many professional staff members coming out and celebrating our students' successes. I would love to see more teachers on a Friday night, I'd love to see more teachers on a Tuesday and Friday night at basketball games. I think we should do everything we can in our power to encourage them to come out and support their students. Students pay attention, and they notice when people are there, they really do, and it brings a new convention to the conversation back at school the next day, so, I'm of the eld that, I think there's other things we could do if we want to raise revenue, rather than, rather than charge our professional or anything, please, come out and support their school district.
Dr. Walker?
I agree with the opinion that we want to encourage faculty to attend the games, and I'm against this amended motion. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to comment on at least one round here. One of the things that I would think the district would want to encourage is, both for security and for the school spirit aspects, is to get as many of the administrators and, quite frankly, the school board members out to as many school activities as possible to show their support for the school. And it's not a monetary issue for me, because I can qualify for the senior card, and I can get in without charge anyway, but I also point out that this practice has been in effect for the district for over 18 years. There's never been any associated problem, there's never been any suggestion that there's any significant revenue lost to the district involved, and we provide the facilities for the public, and we need, when... the public and we need, when we're providing these facilities, to have enough of our staff on hand along with security personnel from the police department or wherever to ensure that we have control over our property. And so if we had to demand staff show up there, we'd have to pay them for the privilege. Which would cost us a lot more than any revenue we could get from the tickets that we'd have to charge them for. So, I mean, it is something I find just incredible that this is looked at as some kind of money source for the district under those circumstances. That's all I have to say. Ms. Donches, you have something to say?
Yes, I like Mr. Earnshaw would have no problem in paying admissions and in fact, you know, when I do come to the school events, I do take my way. I was not aware that staff control of the crowd was a part of the admission. I thought it was just giving the admission so that they could enjoy the game and show the team's support and support. I guess I was surprised to hear about the staff and controlling those stands or whatever going along with that there.
I don't know of any staff member in our high school staff who would not intervene if there were an issue and become involved in any safety, no matter in any athletic event, anywhere, whether it be football or basketball.
But they would do that with anything going on.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But that's not the point.
Are you serious? You spending time with that person? Come on, this is, this is nothing.
Well, it depends. I mean, if you have 550 Folsburg or teachers and they, $66,000 advantage of it, and that's why I was wondering if there's any data on that. I'd be curious to have a survey of the district office as to whether or not they, you know, would put a barrier up as to whether they would attend the month, you know, that's really an attractive thing, that's an attractive...
I don't think you call the question. I think we've spent too much time. Let's just find out if anybody else wants to speak. If anybody wants to speak, we will vote on the amended motion, which is to require that the staff and school board pays for athletic tickets. Ms. Burksell, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
May.
Mr. Rhodes.
No.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
No.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Dr. Parker.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Six nays, six ayes.
We'll go back to the original motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Stoltz?
I move to amend that all school expense for district employees and school board directors will be required to pay the student rate.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay. Is there any discussion on that motion as amended? Mr. Stoltz?
Fair is fair, I think. I, I don't, it almost seems discriminatory to students of lesser means if we're requiring that they play their way to the game, but we don't require our staff, frankly, us play our way to the game. I think that puts up barriers and is discriminatory against people who may not be as fortunate as many of us and have to cross the problem of culture. So I guess fair is fair.
Any further discussion? We will now vote on the second amendment of the motion, which is to require staff and school board members to pay student rates. Ms. Burksell, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Nay.
Mr. Rhodes.
No.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Dr. Parker.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Six nays and three ayes.
We'll go back to the original motion. Ms. Burksell, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Donches. Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Dr. Parker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, we'll now move on to the 2013-14 Eastman School District Budget. May I have a motion, please?
We'll vote together.
Yeah, budget final adoption and the Homestead-Farnstead vote. Is there a second? Is there a second?
No.
Okay. All right. So now we have the combined two motions of the Homestead-Farnstead resolution and the budget. We will now have a presentation by Dr. Steinberger about the proposed, administration-proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. I want to start off with some general comments. First of all, any questions on the changes that we sent to you? I think last board meeting, we informed the board that we needed to hire an additional teacher at the elementary level for special education. That basically was about $73,000 worth of changes. And also last week, you accepted the recommendations for insurance, insurance costs, and so we had to make some changes relative to cost increase for, for those rates. So those are the changes, and we gave you some recommendations about where we would take money from the accounts. Again, the most important thing being that we made the changes within the proposed budget. And I just want to remind the board that when we made changes like that, we certainly don't do it in isolation. There are always individuals back at the office, so to speak, who, who have some things impacted on changes, and we talk to those people. We go see them, we have discussions. So it's just not made in isolation by me, Mr. Glancy, or Miss Sertivol. In fact, that's how we developed the whole budget, with collaboration from people at all levels. It is a real collaborative team process. And I want to remind the board with all due respect that each person that's charged with developing a budget develops his or her own budget based on the future and certainly not on the past. But I want to take this moment to pay a special thank you to Debbie, Sertivol, Jim Frank, the business staff, Mr. Glancy, for the wonderful work they do every year putting together the budget book. Sometimes I feel that maybe there's not enough appreciation. I've been on many school districts, and this is certainly the best budget book that I've been associated with. And I want to thank Debbie and her staff for the incredible work that they do in bringing up... Maybe that's a good place to start, how many people brought your budget books? But I do want to maybe just highlight on two pages, and that would be Roman numeral 423. Again, another pitch for, I guess I'm going to say, common sense. That particular chart has to deal with taxable assessment classifications comparison for the districts, and if you look at East Penn, 81% of our taxable properties are residential. 2% apartment, 2% agriculture, 1% vacant, only 9% commercial. Compare that with Parkland and even Salisbury, suddenly High Whitehall Cop. We just don't have a commercial tax base. Also, look at our rate for industrial properties. Only 4% of our, of our ratables comprise of industrial sites, as again compared to Parkland. Parkland has a total of 34% of their, of their properties are either commercial or industrial, and that's probably a significant reason why their tax rate is a little bit lower than us. So anything we can do in this community to foster growth without having a significant increase in students is something that we ought to pay attention to. And then I'd certainly like to draw the board's attention to Roman numeral 4, page 24. And every year, we go through this dance of, are we spending too much money, this and that, and all the other criticisms that we routinely get, and I think there's another staggering bit of information that the answer is no, we do not. If you look at the total based on 2010, 2011 state data, based on rank where we fit as a school district, in terms of people expenditures, I congratulate us because we have not lessened the quality district of this district, but yet we've dropped four places in one year. Last year, we were 271, we're now 275. That's ranking the top to the bottom, so I think that's another indicator that we are indeed frugal, watch the dollars. And if you recall, and I'm going to talk about this in a couple moments, we did get a letter from PD this year asking us basically, how do we know if we have such strong performance indicators at such a reasonable cost? And again, if you look at that chart, you will see that in the nine districts that comprise Lehigh County, we're ranked seventh in per pupil expenditures. And again, I will be the first to tell you that money is not everything. Been a superintendent in relatively four districts, certainly P-Verd was one of the 30th force in New Jersey, Greck certainly was not wealthy by any stretch of imagination, and I can tell you honestly, I wish it would have had some of the resources we had, we have in this district, it would have made a difference in those two districts perhaps. But here, I think we're blessed, and I think most people will tell you that, we consider it a lesson to work here. But again, at the same time, our taxpayers ranking 275th in the district and the state is certainly an indicator that we are frugal. So with that in mind, Mr.... I just wanted to over a couple thoughts with you, mostly reminders, some considerations. First thing I want to start with, I know it's far enough, but this year, we develop goals, and I'm pleased to tell you that I can put a check mark next to each one of these goals. But we gave you a comprehensive list of goals, organizational departments, but these are five goals that have guided our current work in the moment. I'm going to ask people to stand up. Develop a budget educationally sound and physically prudent, I think we've accomplished that. No argument there. With zero increase in all of you by your support from 900, I think you would agree with us on that regard. To maintain fiscal flexibility and ability to adapt to external factors that may impact the overall budget, this is an important one, and one that I think we're going to have a conversation about later on tonight. Do you go need to adapt to external factors, and external being in this case, the state, external factor being the federal government with sequestration, and also things that we don't control, like specialized students that move in, like developers that notifies that you're going to be building 100 family units in the next year. To improve the overall efficiency of the school district, we're going to talk about our accounts, and I think we want to draw your attention, that just company accounts have decreased from budget to budget, which reflects our commitment to efficiency. To be able to adjust the organization to meet the demands of both funded and unwanted state, federal mandates. We talked about common corridors, no doubt in our mind, and I will not argue with anyone in this room that the common core has caused us to extend funds. You will not get an argument from me. You've heard me talk about probably needing more staff developed, whether it's an intended or unintended consequence, there's no doubt that common core mandated, but also other things. Mr. Ballard likes to talk about some of the programs with the new information programs, date weight, some of the programs we have to do for, for sudden impact syndromes and child abuse. These are programs that we're going to have to pay fees for, or state mandates. To maintain all existing academic instructional programs for 2013, 2014 school year, this is always our goal, and has had, really has been my singular goal since we've had the great economic compression. And I'm pleased to say that another year, I'm not saying we've bashed the bolt because I think we've been careful planners. I think maybe sometimes we don't get enough credit for that, but we have avoided consternation. We have avoided acrogony that has unfortunately faced some of our local districts. Okay. So, here's a question. Most people don't understand the intensive effort it takes to put together a budget. I would ask any administrator in this room that's put, that's developed a budget, would you please stand up and let me thank you publicly for the work that you did on behalf? And here's some of our department persons. I'm sure there may be teachers in the audience that are a little shy too tonight that also had a part in developing their department budgets, but thank you so much. This is the dedicated... See if I'm killing him. Yeah, I'm pretty sure he didn't. I don't need a bullet. But they take their responsibility very seriously. Most people don't understand, we start this process in September, and it seems like every year, we're starting it earlier and earlier because of the complexities. And again, appreciate one fact and remind yourself of this fact as we get into some discussions later on. These people are working with situations and data that are current in September of any budget year, that things do and will change as we go through a year. So, and we do, I want to let everyone know, we do have custodians that play an important part in developing budgets, same with maintenance, and our teachers that are very active, and also our principals give supply requests to teachers. I certainly did as a principal, they get back and they sift through and they agree or not agree, and that becomes part of the building budget. So there are, there's a lot of participation in budget development. Okay, there's some things that I think it's also important to remind yourself as we consider the budget later on. No state budget, June 24th. There may be some things on, some legislative things on the docket, there may be some discussion, maybe some things happened today, I'm not sure, but there's no state budget again on June 24th. So here we are approving a budget again tonight without a firm commitment from the state of Pennsylvania. We don't have it, and that's a fact. There's no information on charter school reform. I mean, I read, I got my past update today, there's some bills that are being talked about, there's Dr. Defender, and this has been a hot button issue for over a year. We have no information, no definitive information on pension issue. There's a caller, there's not a caller. Senate voted 7-6 the other day, they take something out of committee, who knows where that's going. Again, as of today, we have no information. Most taxpayers should understand, we have nothing to do with the pension rate. The only thing we control are the amount of employees we have. Other than that, the rate is established by the state of Pennsylvania. We have no, there's no good state aid for special education. Certainly appreciate the efforts that Senator Brown is doing, a committee is being formed, but again, for the sixth year in a row, there is no movement on special education aid. This money's not yet approved. I understand it's a hot button act topic, not our control, but it's not yet approved. So we have no idea what the impact or non-impact would have had. And sequestration, now we've heard this for years, and it's here, and we've gotten our federal weapons and our reductions, not enough to really harm our programs, but enough to say that if things don't change by next year, we're going to have some tougher issues to deal with, specifically in special education. And more and more local dollars are going to have to be used to support special education than state and federal weapons that we're going to get. And I also want to let the board know and the public that again, every budget is a different budget, it is a new experience based on new data. 66% of our major county accounts have an increase of 1% or less, and that is substantially under the CPI. So for anyone to think that we don't have rigorous discussions about what we put in this budget, that is a foolish notion, and I want everybody to understand that.
Next.
Next. And again, some key reminders again, this budget has no tax increase. We are hiring six new professional staff members. Certainly staff members are optional when you talk about recurring costs, but by the fact that we're hiring six new staff members, we're moving that from discretionary to recurring costs. The five positions, I think there, no, there are actually four to five, four to six positions for special education, they're hardly optional. Those kids are not going to go away, so we're going to be serving those kids. And I think we see with class enrollment, we're not going to go away. And again, until someone directs us differently, with Keystone exams, we have one more biology teacher to high school next year to fit the enrollments that we have for kids taking biology. Our programs remain intact, and you guys in superintendent, I'm so proud of that. And I think you as board members should really be proud of that as you walk around this community and say, you know what, our kids are getting a great education here. Stayed the course with several initiatives. We've talked about common core, that's nice, but how about STEAM? That's still alive and well. Instructional rounds is making a difference in this district, and we're pleased with that. And so we've stayed the course and put funds in the budget to make sure those things happen. This budget invests in staff development, it truly does. I don't think there's any business in America that isn't successful that doesn't invest in your staff. And we don't think that this has a necessary evil, we think it has given our teachers and administrators a great opportunity to learn things, to bring it back to our situations and improve instruction. This budget invests in technology. For the last couple of years, we sort of short, short this term on in technology, and I think we've made good by him, and there you are, I'm serious. You climb in so well. And so, and again, when I look at marvelous happenings in the district this year, what was a better experience than the national school visits? I mean, we got powerful positive comments from our visitors, and a lot has to go to the technology we put in the hands of our teachers to use with our kids. And Michael really knows how to make those right investments, and more so we'd be ready to be answering the questions about budget items regarding technology. We still have to focus on energy savings, I had a conversation with Mr. Lindsay, Mr. Ritter, that a certain portion of their supply or equipment purchases should be, always have in mind of saving energy in this district. I think our track record of the last couple of years has certainly been outstanding. And I think this budget does give us some flexibility for planning. I'll explain that a little bit later on, why that may be an imperative. I may not have dedicated dollars right now, but I need to have some flexibility based on some information I'm going to share with you in a couple moments. Go ahead. Okay, and I want to remind you of the non-salary, of all the non, I'm sorry, I'm a little tight with it, all the non-salary salary accounts and benefit together, 11 out of 20 of them show a decrease from the 2012, 2013 budget to this current budget. So again, when we look at our major accounts, half of them, over half of them show a decrease. Total decrease in these accounts to about $1 million already. So that means that we're looking at everything we've done in making the adjustments. And again, with six teaching positions, I think, and no tax increase, I think that you probably figured out that we would have a 100%. There are 15 major department budgets, nine of those department budgets, and we saw some of the people standing up, show a decrease from last year. Two departments show zero increase. One department shows an increase of only 1.4, and there's Michael Mohn, the big winner this year, I'm going to fill jobs everybody, he got a big increase, a 1.7% increase in his budget, that's what he, that's what he got, he's done a great job this year, he got the index. And that's what it amounts to. Go ahead. Concepts. I think it's always important to let the public and the board know what our group considers important as we develop a budget. We manage a budget. We manage a budget. This is sort of all the things, about every day in the office, I'm asking about where we are on money. That is a primary focus of my responsibility. I treat money issues seriously, probably better than most super parents. I mean, I'll hawk online, and we manage money in this district. Now, she doesn't look ferocious, but she is. She gets the first shoulders she's ever liked, and she comes to me and I'll back her up 100%. Don't get red, that's the truth. Spending, and again, I don't emphasize it, spending is not a dominant item, even if the item is included in the budget. Dr. Ritter Bell may budget for something right now, thinks he's going to get it, I may have a different perspective come November or December based on circumstances. So just because some of the budget doesn't mean they automatically get. We make decisions based on situations and needs. And I want the board to understand that and the community to understand that. Every purchase order is treated seriously, nothing is routine. We take the long view. We do. We have to, because we can't count, here it is again, we can't count the state, the feds are all messed up, we've got to count ourselves. So we've got to ask ourselves, is something we're doing this year going to impact next year? Is something we're going to do next year going to impact the year after? We ask those questions all the time internally. And we believe in the big picture, that there are consequences. There are domino effects for doing something, and there are domino effects for not doing something. We expect circumstances to change, and even since I've seen you in two weeks, circumstances have changed that make me a little nervous with this budget, a little nervous. We value flexibility and having the resource to address unexpected problems and issues like that. We believe frugal is good. We really do. And that's, that's the guy I just gave you about dropping to 275, that proves it. We want house building in the system and avoid the pack of motor. Worst thing you could have for parents and community members is to have a roller coaster ride, a program is in, it's out, it's in, it's out, with the paper. Look what's going on in other districts. I feel bad, I feel horrible for Alton. Kids and parents and teachers don't know if they have a job, don't know if they're going to curriculum, as long as I'm super dead, that's never going to happen here. We're not shy about saving. Some people want to attack us, we're not shy about savings. Which quite frankly, that strategy has worked, and it will continue to work in the future. We are fiscally conservative and prudent in our spending. We are conservative when it comes to money. And I have a piece of literature which I'm going to share with you in a moment. We aspire to the excellent students of public funds. If anyone wants to have a problem with some fiscal impropriety in this district, yes, mistakes can be made, but not with lawful intention. We are educationally sound, and that is our mission, and that's really what a budget is all about. So, sum this up, what are some of our concerns and our forecasts? There's no real fiscal path for the state government. There really isn't. I don't have a clue. I truly do not have a clue. I don't know what the state budget is going to be, more importantly, I don't know if anything's going to be sustained from year to year. Sequestration, sequestration will force either cuts or replacement of services in local dollars. That is going to happen unless the feds straighten themselves out. We're seeing that now with cuts in Title I, Title II, Title III, and in flow-through money for special ed. Again, we don't have enough that it's going to knock us out of the game issue, but in the future, continued 6% to 7% or 8% cuts in federal aid is going to hurt and make us face a tougher choice to choose. And here's some of the good news that I'm nervous about, good news some people say, scary news for me. We got a call last week, this bird's own, from a developer, kind of called and informed us that he's putting 100 lots on the market now, 100 lots on the market now, near the Hells Blockers. He expects those to be all sold by December and kids coming to school in those homes next school year 2014. I hope that sense of chola appears fine. You all know that we don't have a whole lot of spaces in our elementary program. A couple more developments like this, and folks, guess what, we're back in the planning mode for another elementary school. You all know it's coming, and I've been talking about it. Here's the first evidence that it's happening, at least they called it in the morning. How about this one, since last time I saw you? Not to pick on special ed kids, but for some reason, I guess parents really love our programs because they moved here for our special ed programs. Three youngsters were enrolled just since June 10th. Their combined tuition, which is non-budgeted by the way, will exceed $160,000. That's money that I'm going to have to come up with somewhere in this budget to support those students. We're going to make do, but right now, I don't have a category that specifically has those three students attached to. Here's another update, since the last board meeting, since the last board meeting, we've had, go back. All right, okay, well, all right, so, well, I'll just read these. Refinancing in 2013, 2014 is not a short thing. I want to remind everybody with all due respect, we've been the beneficiaries of some outstanding bond refineries that have really put an impact on debt service. This may be the last year that we can reduce debt service. Next year, in talking to Debbie and Lynn and Scott Sheeran, we're looking at probably an increase of $500,000 in our debt service. You need to remember that. You need to remember that, at least in the next hour. In talking to Scott Sheeran from PFM, it's not a done deal that we're going to be able to refinance next year at all. We've certainly been reading about the bond market may be blasted away. There may be not, there may be not an opportunity to refinance. We've become spoiled and dependent on it. That may not happen next year. So we're letting you know, debt service, not this year's budget, but next year's budget, probably increasing by 500,000. We have no form of information on the general development and the game and road project. All of us know it's coming, but we sit here tonight, we don't have any firm information. We know Mr. Janelle's got his development group, what's the impact going to be on us? I don't know. We hear about game and road, I've talked to some principals, that looks like it's going to happen, but I don't know when that's, 200 apartments, minimal. They tell me it's not an impact, will have an impact in a moment, yep, I'll believe that when I see it. And I want to remind everybody, whether you like it or not, we have contractual benefits, pension, and transportation obligations. That will be challenges in the 2014, 2015 budget. But again, we remind everybody, we do take the long view, and these are going to be challenges, not necessarily this budget, but next year. And since this last board meeting, we've had seven students register at McCunchy. I think I stood, I sat there last week and promised parents we would take a look at it. One of the youngsters already is a fifth grade student. So now I'm officially in the looking mode, to let the board know. When we get a couple more kids at McCunchy, I will have no, no problem coming back and telling you that we're going to make some budgetary shifts by hiring another fifth grade teacher at McCunchy. Six at Shoemaker, if you look at the class sizes at Shoemaker, they're not the best either. Now, again, I'll be the first to tell you, we don't know what the impact the students leaving, because there are always the students who leave, but we'll come back and tell you. Remember the great work that Mrs. Campbell did a couple of years ago on documenting that. Okay. All right. And again, one of the big things for me, obviously, there's no, there's no evidence that special reform will happen, there's no evidence that special education funding will be adjusted. I can't tell you it's going to happen, there's no evidence that charter school funding won't be adjusted. And the thing that you need to remember, even this year, even if we were to raise the index to 2%, which I don't, they don't get that high, but if we were able to raise the index in 2014, 2015, which most people cringe, we could only raise $1.5 million in new revenues. You just saw $500,000 in debt service. So in other words, if you're doing it pure from budget to budget, that's a million dollars to cover contracts, transportation, pension, and you know that's not going to happen. So we should celebrate tonight and say, this is a great budget, but next year, starting July 2nd, we'll go right back to work on figuring out what we're going to be doing this time next year. I think that's the last, well, I do want to make a statement, and I'm saying this with all due respect. Any cuts to the proposed model budget will only be the fiscal hole that must be filled first in an unsettled environment as we develop the 2014, 2015 budget. That is undeniable fact. And the possibility of needing more staff in 2013, 2014 year is a possibility, you saw that with McCunchy. And I have a sense that's a stronger possibility than 2014, 2015 budget. So Mr. Bell, I'm going to turn it over to the board.
Okay, at this, at this point, we have another presentation that Ms. Sanchez has requested to put in on the budget, and we'll have that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, before we, I do want to end on a positive note. We always look at third party, I mean, I can say a lot of things, you saw some statistics, but it's always great that third party sources tell you that you're doing a nice job. You have the letter from PDE, and just the other day, we did get, or had a report from Standard and Porson, I'm pleased to tell you, that's another, it's another solid report. And in there, it has managed and conservative. Our district practices are standard, bond balance reserves is strong, and debt is moderate. Basically, we kept our double A rating, and in this environment, I think that's a good thing, so. So I'm very pleased we got a standard report, I'll give you.
Mr. Long, can you bring up Ms. Sanchez's latest presentation?
Well, I think like you did with Dr. Seidenberger, you may, you may have to do the thing you just indicated you're going to do.
Leslie's not there.
Hi, Mr. I've got a microphone, there's no voice. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Point order, could you speak up again, please? Quiet. Back here.
Remember, that's your own husband, so.
A little opposite of the usual. So these budget reductions that I'm suggesting, maintain all the programs and staff, they are based on the five-year historical data, they do maintain the budgetary reserve or required 5%. I feel that they're conservative, and they do not cut the fund balance. The first slide is just an overview of the expenditures budgeted compared to the actual since the 2007 and '08 budget. And as you can see, each year, even taking into account the budgetary reserve, the funds not spent each year range from, have ranged from close to $2 million to $4,800,000. These excesses are what prompted me to analyze the individual function and objects to better understand where the spending could possibly understand where the spending could possibly be curtailed, as it does not seem fair to the taxpayer to have such large amounts of money remaining at the end of the year, in addition to the policy required 5% budgetary reserve, which is set aside to cover any budget shortages. The fund balance at the end of last year was between 13 and 15 million dollars with one-time plan con dollars of $1,250,000 committed to ongoing pensions, and this fund balance survives every budget. Updated budget numbers have been distributed since the deadline of last Wednesday, which was imposed on me, but I have incorporated them into this latest presentation.
Ms. Sanchez, would you explain which, how you determine, term excess?
Well, as you can see, the number at the beginning, which was the budgeted, say for 2011 and '12, that was what was budgeted. We actually spent 110,811,415. That difference is 9 million, and then the budgetary reserve, and we subtract that off, and then we have excess. And I understand that there's revenues and everything else involved, that I would like to concentrate on the expenditures.
But isn't that number usually called fund balance in our budget?
Point of order, Mr. Ballard, we save our questions to the end. When Dr. Seidenberger is giving his presentation, I would ask that we hold Ms. Sanchez's same standard and wait until she's finished.
This is still...
We are trying to understand this presentation. I'm asking questions for clarity.
You're holding her to a different standard now, are the administration?
Someone, someone prevent a question to... I'm trying to make sure that we hit the terms correctly, because that number to me normally is fund balance, not excess funds. It's not the same terms that's used in the budget. You called it small.
Thank you, go ahead.
On the next slide, please. This is just an overview of the, a summary of the reductions that I'm suggesting, and I'm gonna just start with each line. I understand what you might be, so I will try to correct on the next line. This is regular education professional services line. It was reduced 11,000 in the latest budget and the proposal that we received at this meeting, and was reduced by 204,250 in the original budget. A step in the right direction for sure. According to the 2013-14 budget book, there was a big jump in 2011 and '12 for RBPN fiber school, but the actual costs were much less. And even in 2011, '12, with a jump in fiber, fiber only 120,900 of the 416, 250 was spent, and this 185, which is budgeted, which includes the recent 11,000, budgeted for 2013-14. And I agree with the administration's thoughts on this line can be reduced, and I do propose reducing it further, just like $50,000 to bring it down to 135,000. For 400 purchased property services, admin has proposed a slight decrease in this line for 2013-14. There are, previously, there had been an 18% increase as noted in the 212-13 budget book. No specifics were noted for that increase. Historically, this line is over-budgeted, but propose reducing it by 61,835, which brings it to 450,000. About 25,000 more that was spent in '11 and '12 and relatively on par with previous years. The admin proposal for an increase in other purchases services, regular education, were a decrease. It's due to programs running lower than budget last year, and reduced several special education student costs in this line, and these are explained in the budget book. Again, this line is historically over-budgeted, therefore, I recommend this reduction. However, Dr. Seidenberger, just given your 500,000, you know, certainly would be open to concession on this line with the new, new year of this year. The support services for personnel, historically, this line is over-budgeted for 2013-14, a slight decrease proposed by the administration, which is double what was spent for the past two years. And I recommend budgeting $7,000 for a savings of $8,046.
Was the slide missed or something?
There's a specific slide. We're talking about 1100. Move ahead there. Skip the slides. 209, you know?
Yeah, 21,500, that's correct. As you can see, the, the budget of 15,000 in both the 2013 and 13 and 14 is what a double what was spent in '11 and '12 and '10 and '11. Those lines, thinking that's adjusted. For the equipment of support services, in 2011 and '12, 32500 was budgeted for this line and was not totally expended. No special notes for a needed increase are noted in the 2012-13 or the 13-14 budget books. Therefore, I am recommending bringing this line back close to the 11-12 budget for a total of 320, a savings of $20,115. This object has been reduced every year since 2009-10, so assuming we can stay steady with just a slight growth with that rate of inflation, 320,000 seems doable. The 300 purchase of professional services. In the 2012-13 budget book, the budgeted decreases attributed to a savings and efficiencies for earned income tax collection and reduced legal fees. The most recent admin budget proposal reduces this line by another $19,960, a step I agree with. Since 2009 and '10, actual spending has been reduced in this object. Professional services are something under our control, and based on what we spent, I propose further reducing this line to 255,000, more in line with historical spending and an additional savings of 36,820. For other objects, 800 other objects for the administration's support services, spending in this line has been consistently in the low 40,000 and over-budgeted by 11,000 to 14,000 per year. I like the recent trend of decreasing this line, including the additional 2,000 reduction just introduced, and recommend helping it along by budgeting 45,000, which is still more than was spent annually over the past five years and the further $6,800 savings. The public health purchase professional services in the 2012-13 budget book, it is noted this line was increased 4.8%, but only amounted to $500 and was no other note. The budget amount has not been reached for the past five years. I do note that 32,500 was transferred into this account in the 2012-13 year, but since admin did not raise the budget for 2014, I would consider that transfer into this line an anomaly, and reduce, and propose reducing the line to $10,000, which is a $1,000 savings. For the public health purchase services, in 2011-12, an increase of 1900% or $22,800 was budgeted for maintenance and repair on cardiac science AED units. However, the actual amount expended in this line was 3,780. Additionally, $9,555 was transferred from this account in 2012-13, so I propose decreasing this line to 5,000, a savings of 17,000. In the operation and maintenance of plant services, purchase professional services, in 2012 and '13, I was glad to see the admin's latest proposal to reduce these professional services by $40,000. It was noted in the 13-14 budget, where there was a 33.1% decrease, with some shifting to supplies in the initial budget proposal. I commend that reduction as well. That said, after reviewing historical spending, I propose reducing this line further to 90,000 for an additional $20,000 savings. For purchase services, number 400, the administration certainly to be commended for continually searching to reduce energy costs, reviewing the history of this line, and hearing how meetings, at meetings, how reduced energy costs are aggressively pursued, as well as electric and heating oil being stable, natural gas going down, I recommend reducing this line to $1,650,000. It's 20,000 more than the cost in '11 and '12, but still a savings of 85,000 to 26,000. In the operation of plant services, other purchase services, I was prepared to commend the administration for slowly reducing these costs, and then the fire insurance and added increase was added to the latest version in the budget. Purchase services are a cost that can and should be controlled. Spending has consistently been less than the amount budgeted. I'm staying with my original proposal that this line be reduced to 525,000, which is almost 19,000 more than was spent in 2011-12. As far as supplies in the maintenance of plant services, these supplies have been over-budgeted in a range from 164,518 to 379,102 over the past few years. I propose a $1,600,000 budget line with a concerted effort to keep supply spending curtailed and within this lower cost. For equipment, noted in the 2013-14 budget book, equipment is budgeted down 71% or 56,700. I propose reducing it an additional 5,000 to 18,000, which is 6,000 over the 2010-11 spending and a savings of 5200. And I may not have kept this one enough, so if anyone on the board would like to reduce it further, I will attempt that. In support services for central office, an additional 11,150 has been budgeted this year due to technology department shifting expenses to this line, based on the amount that has been spent from 2008 on, for the most part, the highest amount we have seen is 165,955. I would like to see the budget stay within the top of about $165,000 for a $10,860 savings. For equipment in 2011-12, 91,000 was budgeted, just as proposed by the administration in 2013-14, and 51,771 were expended in '11 and '12. Yet 114,000 was budgeted for 2012-13. 56,533 was transferred out of equipment lines in 2012-13. The administration is suggesting 91,000. I propose 55,000, a little more than was expended last time, and 91,000 was budgeted. For support services in central other objects, historically, this other objects is over-budgeted, except for $28 under-budgeted in 2010 and '11, with careful monitoring, $300 appears sufficient for a savings of $200. For student activities purchase services, as noted in the 2013-14 budget book, this line is up 138.9% because more was spent in 2011-12 than was budgeted. Around 26,000 was transferred to this line in 2012-13, but I ask, should we add to this line and spend more money, or shall we try to stay within the budget restraint that we chose? So, I propose limiting this line to 50,000. It's still 7,000 above the 11-12 spending and a $9,340 savings. In student activities other purchases, certainly a decrease in this line is to be commended, based on historical spending, or I just propose reducing it further to 210,000, still above 2011-12 spending and a savings of 18,995. In student activities equipment, it appears there's little spending in this line, except for one year, spending has been zero. I propose budgeting zero for a $2,000 savings. I wasn't sure if this is where the gentleman is speaking about the swimming pool, I'm not sure how people know that, so that might have been a different line. And then for 3200 student activities other objects, this line is budgeted with a 23% increase, and noted in the budget book that the 9700 increase is due to proper allocation. However, historically, no more than $33,000 has been spent. I propose holding the line at 35,000, a savings of 16,880. I would be willing to add the 9700 to the 2011 number, which was 32,638, if we can show that you've moved the 9700 from where it was previously allocated. And even at 32,638 with the 9700, would be a 42,338 and still savings. So those are my suggested proposals, and that's just line adding them up at the end. It came to 141,006. And just as a reminder, then that last slide again, I think there's one more slide? I just forget saying that it maintains all the programs and staff, that is based on the five-year historical data, maintains the budgetary reserve. I feel that they're conservative. They are a little more than previously spent at all in cases, and it's just on balance. So, I could entertain questions, if there aren't any before, I may amend the motion to...
I think Dr. Seidenberger has the right to respond to these questions.
Would you back up one slide? I really don't know where to start, but I guess I'll start with the fundamental question. You saw all the people in my staff that have built this budget, and you did this work in your own. And what I'm disappointed is at no time during this process, did you ever call me, sit down, ask my opinion, everything, on even what is in those accounts? And why don't you start with the $2,000 item? Your Don Wright parent, parents are hot about that issue, because what concerns me is the comment you just made, you weren't sure what's in that budget, or what's in that account, but you were ready to go ahead and recommend a $2,000 cut. Well, that is for diving boards, and more importantly, there's, let me explain, there's $250,000 of electronic equipment in that pool, and we have been maintaining a maintenance program for a long time. Not only is it diving boards, it's touch pads, and we've been, our plan is to replace those once a year. So it seemingly may not be a lot of money, $2,000 to you, but it's very important to the swimming program. We've had our coach, we've had Mr. Seid, who's just retired, sit down and develop the maintenance plan. When you make a cut like that unilaterally, I feel it's, it's an act of disrespect, first of all, when people put the budget together. But let's go from, let's start, and I'm gonna come back to, how about if we start with 1100, regulate 500? Okay, $258,000 cut. You're semi-correct, Ms. Sanchez, in isolating that account. Let me tell you what's in that account. Let me ask you, do you know what's in that account?
No, I can't think of my chart of accounts, but...
Well, that's a shame, because if you're recommending a cut, you ought to be able to tell what's in that, this account. And I don't wanna be rude, but you're the one making the recommendations. Let me tell you what's in that account. As all our charter school students, and we drop that account by $100,000 this year. Also in that account, our special ed students are mainstream. Now, Mrs. DeCarrick does a good job in estimating how many students are in there. That number's in there for a reason. Also, in that account, are students that are residential placements. We don't have a choice in the last two. But, if you really wanna give me a choice, that 258,000, you know what that represents? It represents the cost of about 28 charter school kids. Should we have a lottery and explain about 28 parents that we don't have enough money for 28 charter school students? See, again, this is what concerns me. You're making a recommendation for a cut, and you don't know what's involved in the actual cuts. And one of the reasons is, you didn't talk to any of us, I would have been happy to sit down and go over your data, your concerns, some of your ideas, but here we are tonight, and I feel like, number one, I'm in an awkward position. I'm in an old, old classic situation. I'm gonna respond to a board member making a presentation, and I'm not so sure if you know what those recommendations make. Let's just check out a couple more. On 21,500, and again, it may not seem like a whole lot of money to you, are you aware of some of those accounts? We've had increase in postage. We've had an increase this year in mileage rates have gone up, just for employees traveling between schools. That was not something in historical data, that's real live data right now. Also, we have people that plan out guidance services, psychological services, and social work services. So the people who put that budget together are pretty good on an estimation of what are services again. But again, we've already spent 71... But again, we've already spent seventy-one hundred dollars this year, so I don't think you had accurate information to talk about what changes should or should not be made in an account without looking at, seeing what we've spent this year already. I'll take another one. Twenty-three, three hundred. Things have changed. We now have EIT tax collection, collection commissions, and legal, and audit services are in there. The draft did not include, yeah, but the draft did include EIT commissions, because we have increased EIT revenues. Therefore, Burkhine Works, collecting the money now, gets an increased share of that pot. That's something you may not have known enough, and that's one of the reasons why we increased that account. Also, in that account, special ed cases are exactly what we budgeted for. We think there's an appropriate amount on the cases we, we may face. Legally, I'm talking about, yes, there's a reduction, but the prospect of going to court with overly aggressive parents of special ed, but that's not an unusual circumstance in education. We'll look for another interesting one. How about twenty-six, four hundred? You recommend as a twenty-two dollar account, you want to cut that back to five thousand dollars. Do you have the idea, how old are audiometers are in this room?
Audiometers.
Audiometers. They're required. They're all fifteen years or older. One of the things Dr. Miravello has got to do every year is check on the status of those devices, unvalued or under purchase on this year. I would certainly be cautious about cutting an account where we're required to give kids hearing examinations. But again, maybe a little phone call, a little conversation, we could have helped you up with that, and told you what Dr. Miravello had planned. And again, relying on historical data is an empty proposition at best. We've always been so counsel to our people, if there's a change, we ask, we don't assume that because someone didn't spend, that it should go away. And I, as a superintendent, I'm very concerned with the message you're sending out to my staff here. If you budget, don't spend, what are you telling them? We should go ahead and spend and not have any, any money left over the end of the year? I think that's a very dangerous message to get out to the staff, especially in a year when we have another tax increase. Let me talk about two hundred, or two thousand six hundred, six hundred maintenance cost issues. So easily say, just cut a hundred fifty-six thousand. Historical data should tell you that we've had two mild winters the last two years, extraordinarily mild winters. Even though we've done a lot, even though we've done a lot with energy savings, a cold snap in September, October could throw those, those energy savings and, and forces to have more expenditures just by turning on heat early, or even a warmer stretch in April, May, make, have forces to turn on the air conditioning. I mean, I think it's important that we maintain enough funds to make sure our students and our teachers and our staff members live in a comfortable environment. And that goes also for basic cleaning supplies. I never want to have a situation where we run out of cleaning supplies. I think our maintenance guys and custodians do a great job, and yes, we've been working for a while, but at some point, we're going to have to replace those supplies. So I would certainly not recommend making a cut of one hundred sixty thousand dollars in basic supplies. In fact, I can't endorse any of these proposed cuts, for some of the spiritual reasons I talked about. An eight hundred forty-one thousand dollar cut creates an eight hundred forty-one thousand dollar hole that we must fill first in next year's budget, with a possible increase of maybe only one million five hundred thousand dollars in revenues coming in next year. That means I've got to, or we've got to, fill that hole first before we do anything. So just from a common sense standpoint, making cuts on an uncut, on an uncut budget, I would find very difficult. Let's see what else we want to talk about. Well, let's go back to eleven hundred, three hundred, eleven hundred, three hundred forty. That does include the district cyber program. And by the way, a hundred eighty-five thousand we budgeted is almost exact to the figure of what we spent in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. We actually spent one eighty-four, two sixty-four. So the number that we're budgeting, I think, is an accurate call. I would certainly not decrease that money. Certainly, the objective is to get more students to return to our BLM program. So again, I don't know what data you had, but when we look at expenditures, I think what we budget is right on mark, and we've already cut eleven thousand dollars from our original recourse in that. Eleven hundred, four hundred includes all instructional equipment repair and maintenance services, including copying machines in all the buildings. And those, those allocations are an individual school budget. So the fact of the matter, we'd have to go back and negotiate with every principal, because you're taking one fixed number that is spread out over multiple accounts. I may not even be able to figure out how to cut from one principal and not from another. But again, I rely on our principals to put these budgets together. This is our, this area in our budget, we're already showing a decrease from budget to budget. Why do you want to think out more? We need the flexibility, and sometimes we can't fix something, just an impossibility. Sometimes we have to buy something new, and then we transfer funds out of that account. It's not a static, and that's part of the problem under this proposal. There's an assumption that everything is static, and it's not. And by the way, eleven, twelve, we spent more in this account than what we're budgeting for in thirteen, fourteen. So again, I think we've practiced being fool. Thinking back to twenty-two hundred, seven hundred includes some of the technology equipment and small library equipment. You understand, before he's a man who does a marvelous job with technology. You know, this time last year, we may have budgeted for iPad cards. Now more love for Chrome, with Chrome cards. So what am I supposed to tell? Michael, go ahead and purchase the more expensive packages, because if you don't, someone's going to come by next year and take your money away. We rely on him to do a good job. Michael, maybe you want to explain about some of the purchases you've made just in the last year, and explain to Mrs. Donches how this all works.
Well, the seven hundred accounts, there are fifteen seven hundred accounts that cover many areas, infrastructure, wireless equipment, but the technology budget was gutted a few years ago, three hundred some thousand dollars or so. We opened Willow Lane in that time. When I write POs next week, July first, I will be buying, in every refresh cycle, computers that were bought in two thousand four. If I'm lucky, next spring, I will buy up two thousand five and maintain a year of buying in refresh.
Well, you use great flexibility in this account, it's based on what we determine the purchase, and you're always looking for the best deal possible.
Well, accounts tend to flow. If I have an account money in capitalizer equipment, new equipment, and I budget a wireless card, pick up Burdes, and it's a thirty-five thousand dollar card, and we get there, and we reassess every single time we make a purchase, and we buy a Google Chromebook card instead of that, that's an eight thousand dollar purchase, not a thirty-five thousand dollar purchase. Chunks of money of tens of thousands of dollars might shift inside those fifteen, seven hundred account codes back and forth through offices, network, equipment for schools, equipment for, for students, capitalized, non-capitalized. There's account codes that go back and forth and head and flows. It might be heavier in software one year, we might shift out of seven hundreds into some software, back and forth. Again, the ability to be dynamic, that's what Dr. Seidenberger expects from me.
And I expect that from all my administrators. Twenty-four, three hundred, you only recommend a thousand dollar cut, that's a big thousand dollars, since we already asked Dr. Miravello to take a reduction. That account includes contracted services for health, medical, and dental services. Again, those are all requiring services. You know what concerns me? If you look at the data, our cost, our number of students and poverty circumstances are increasing. This is another shot in the dark, based on some feeling, but I would not be surprised if we overspent this account last year. Well, we've asked Dr. Barrett, Val, to be a good thinking member, and to restrain that account for a little bit, but they cut it even a thousand dollars. I certainly can't support it. We talked about twenty-six, four hundred, but let's go to twenty-six, the maintenance refuse collection. Mr. Lancy, perhaps you want to talk about Purchase Services in the four hundred account, since Mrs. Donches is recommending maybe five thousand dollar cut for you?
We actually moved money into this account to allow us to do additional maintenance repairs on the buildings, because we were not able to complete them last year. So because of that, we knew we had a need, we knew we didn't have a lot of capital money, we were actually trying to get money in here to do a lot of the smaller maintenance and repair jobs around this area. So that's why that money's there. It was put there for a specific purpose. But again, looking at twenty-six, six hundred, the same principle would apply for supplies. We've had two mild winters in a row. We've lowered the budget to the savings, we've lowered that budget significantly, so I think the amount that we put in is a responsible number, based on circumstances that we've evaluated, whatever. Just, historically, if you look back, your utility costs can vary ten to fifteen percent between a mild winter and a hard winter. Well, this amount of money is lower than ten percent. So I would not be recommending that we budget for a mild winter, I would recommend that we budget for a hard winter and hope we don't have one.
The same thing would apply to twenty-six, seven hundred, maintenance equipment. In that account, such things as snow blows, mowers, vacuum cleaners, we've already decreased this budget, but I think the things that we're recommending in there are, are based on these, our custodial maintenance services.
And we've actually oversold this budget this year, and we're hoping that the budget that we have for next year, we will be able to manage and hold on that line. So to be able to cut that even further would not be recommended.
So Mr. Ballard, I, I don't feel like we want to go through and pick each one of these up. In a whole, my main concern is, we appreciate the work Mrs. Donches did, but I have to tell you that the work that she's done is not based on anything real out of any particular budget, because she doesn't know what people have requested. Certainly, she can ask those questions, and we'd love to answer them, as we did now, but the fact that come up, I made a presentation, and you go lightly, decide on your own what the district needs and not needs, is of concern, I think, not with me and my staff. So I think it's not, maybe some other board members to ask the questions. Okay, Mr. Moore, you want to cancel that off now? We'll go to other board comments on the budget motion. Mr. Stolz?
Before we go any further, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow for each suggested budget cut or numbers have budget additions and questions. We've voted on individually inside of what we usually do, which is, if somebody proposes an amendment, then you're voting on the entire resolution.
Well, we have a motion to suspend the rules. At that one, we're going to have to get in too. Not debatable, okay?
And a two-thirds vote.
We have a motion for us to suspend the rules to vote on each individual proposed cut individually.
Or addition, should they be?
Or addition. Mr. Burtsell, will you call the roll, please? An affirmative vote suspends the rules, a negative vote leaves the rules as we normally progress.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
No.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polacano?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
No.
Mr. Stolz?
Aye.
Ms. Heine?
No.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
Six ayes, three ayes.
That motion is denied. Are there further comments on that?
Oh, are we getting our discussion?
What is the question that's on the table now?
It's regular motions.
I thoroughly endorse the report of the budget. And I think it mentioned that, you know, in my personal life, if I found eight hundred and forty-one dollars, they had...
I'll ask everybody to use the microphones, please.
In my personal life, if I found eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for a good, it would be an incredible personal rainfall. But reviewing here the Homestead-Farmstead Act, our crew townsheads and crew farmsteads are fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen tax savings. At the last meeting, Ms. Donches presented a paper showing savings that she would propose of nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So I asked Ms. Sernible what that tax savings would mean per household at nine hundred and eleven. And the tax saving for average households would be thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. If it were nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars, it would be a bit less, eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, maybe something in the order of thirty-five dollars per household, I'm not sure. And based upon the conversation I heard from taxpayers today, of course, they want the school to be consumers of their money. And Dr. Seidenberger and his team have demonstrated that indeed they are, and the, the differential between budgeted money and spent money through years has been a result of a constant examination of the budget going forward, as Dr. Seidenberger said. Just because there is money in the budget doesn't mean it is automatically spent. Every item is examined and reviewed as the year goes on. So that's what causes the differential. And you'll remember the year that the, that the economy absolutely collapsed mid-year, the spending stopped, to keep us from, keep us from growing. So I would suggest, strongly suggest, that the average taxpayer would gladly pay that thirty-seven dollars in taxes between what Ms. Donches recommends is reducing the budget by, and what the, what the administration suggests the budget should be, to make sure that the next time we have special needs students come into the district, or an influx of students require more teachers, or a need for, dear heavens, paying for additional charter school students, that our budget has the flexibility to do so, rather than having to scramble. To me, it is certainly worth the thirty-seven dollars in my tax bill, and I thoroughly support the budget as it has been presented.
Okay. Ms. Earnshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. A couple of things stood out to me. First of all, the untenability of many of these proposed cuts. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of it, we heard, goes to three things. Charter school students, which we are required by law to pay, we can't just decide, no, we can't afford it, so we're not going to pay for those students. And I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, Dr. Seidenberger, if we refuse to pay those bills from the charter schools, the state will pay the bills on our behalf and deduct it from our state subsidy. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we can't get out of it, no matter how much we might like to. The other two parts of that are mainstream special education students, that's another requirement of the law, having the least restrictive environment, and then also special ed students who are a residential program. So I see these are programs where the students have such significant needs that we cannot meet them in a classroom setting, no matter what kind of support we would give them. Is that correct, Dr. Seidenberger?
That's correct.
So, so right there, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, we simply cannot cut. That, that reduces any potential savings to under six hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, it, it... So, you know, it was interesting to me when Dr. Seidenberger was asking questions, you know what's in this? Well, no, I just thought it was too high. I looked at numbers from previous years, and maybe last year was higher, but two years ago was lower. So I like the number from two years ago, so I'll just pick that and say that's what we should spend this year. These remind me of a cut first, ask questions later. Not quite like shooting first, but when I was first learning basic carpentry skills, it was impressed on me over and over again, measure twice, cut once. Instead, we're cutting and proposing cuts without really knowing what we're cutting. And certainly, I don't support these arbitrary cuts that were made without any consultation, any questioning of the people who actually proposed the spending items in it. I was surprised to hear that Mr. Mohn is just now replacing computers that were purchased in 2004 and that next year he'll be replacing, he hopes, all the computers that were purchased in 2005. Where I work, they shifted from a three-year replacement schedule to a four-year replacement schedule on PCs. Even going from three to four years, we have significant increase in downtime incidents. Crashed hard drives, failed motherboards, failed video cards, and other equipment that required costly maintenance. So they would have, we're having to buy spare parts on the aftermarket because the manufacturers no longer supply parts from four-year-old models. They had to buy used parts where they could. They had to cannibalize other computers to take a hard drive out of this one or a video board out of that one in order to make it work. I'm surprised that you actually are able to run PCs that are eight or nine years old without significant amounts of magic pixie dust from the IT.
It's just bad enough with that.
It's just bad enough. So the fact that they've stretched these budgets as far as they have, I think it's a testament to the fiscal responsibility of the employees of this district. As we've noted many times in the past, Dr. Seidenberger is very cautious about spending. We do not have a use it or lose it mentality in this district. We do not simply permit people to spend money just because it was budgeted. Every purchase is considered and evaluated for its appropriateness, both within the budgetary constraints and within the financial constraints of the district and the real needs of the district. We have a very, very well-run district. I appreciate very much the extreme efforts that the administration goes through to make the district run as efficiently as it does. I hope we will have another mild winter, not only for our budget here, but for my budget at home, and also because I hate scraping ice and snow off my car. But, you know, hopefully, some things will align for us and we'll have some positive budget news. We won't have to use quite so much salt on our sidewalks. We won't have to spend quite as much on repairing snow blowers. These would all be good things that would help us, but I don't have the ability to predict the weather six months from now and nine months from now. I wish I did. I wouldn't be working here. I'd be quite wealthy as a commodities trader. But the fact that these are conservative budgets, we hope we're going to spend less than budgeted. We hope we're going to have greater revenues than budgeted. That's the only reason I support this budget. It's got a very large structural deficit that spends down our fund balance rather significantly. But I have every confidence in our administration's ability to control spending, and I have an expectation that our revenues will be higher than we're anticipating now. I'm really hoping that's going to be the case. I would certainly volunteer for a raise at my job so I can pay more in income tax. I don't know if my employer will accommodate me or not. But, you know, these are all things that I think can be positive for us, and I think we'll come out okay if a bit tight with the budget as proposed. If we embark on these uninformed cuts that were proposed, quite frankly, from ignorance, and ignorance is curable by education, but I think that would be folly for us to pursue. Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Mr. Stolz, I intend you to have some comments on the budget on a thing called a blog. You want to bring those up now?
I'm going to see how the rest of the conversation goes, and I'll... I have some questions aside from anything else. I'll get to them later.
Mr. Barker?
I'd like to express my support for the administration's budget. I think not only looking at the big picture, how we ran relative to other school districts, experience being on the board, also experience having kids, one kid, in the district. I have seen that the district, that the administration does run a very tight fiscal shift and does not spend money if it doesn't need to. I would even add, although we're not, not the question now, Ms. Donche's report also reflects the fact that we are very frugal and don't necessarily spend money just because it's in the budget. I think that's an important thing to understand, that the budget does not spend any money. It just sets not the limit on what we can spend. So I would like to express my support, as I mentioned, for the budget having.
Okay. Someone else want to comment on the first round? Mr. Stolz?
Evidently, everyone else has talked out. I have some questions that have nothing to do with cuts whatsoever first, and we'll sit that for us later. Dr. Seidenberger, I'm very pleased to see that we have no increased budget first time since I've been on board. That's real, though I hate to say, that's real progress. How did you manage to have nearly $5 million of increased spending without a tax increase? And keep in mind, I'm just a simple uneducated fellow, so few small words, possibly some flow charts and graphics.
Well, one of the first lines, we cut 1.7 million dollars. You saw that. And our revenues have increased to some degree. You've seen that. And...
But I thought that the state was really putting forth some economy tax education.
I didn't talk about state and local revenues. If you look at it, they're up a little bit, a few percent of the...
State revenues are up.
Slightly, slightly. We did put $300,000 into the budget. That means we're about 1.5 million behind Mr. Horvitz, cuts two years ago, 1.28 billion. But we don't complain about that. I think, Mr. Stolz, the idea being that we prioritize what we want to do. And again, we don't cut 1.7 million dollars and move it around because we just maintain what we've done all the time. And Mr. Earnshaw does make an important note that we've used a little bit more in fund balance, fund balance of the budget this year. And so we're always concerned about that. But that's one of the reasons why we are frugal and why we do control spending throughout the year.
If I remember correctly, what you're doing this year with some of the excess fund balance is essentially what Ms. Donche and I proposed last year, and we were told that if we did that, we would have to give it.
No. One of the reasons, I wasn't here to tell you that, but one of the things I think you got to keep in mind, I just gave you a report from standing in force. If you read in there again, in that document, you'll see that they make a mention that our fund balance, our reserves are strong, and that's their word, not mine. And I think you've heard that again from Mr. Sheerlin, who was here talking about, that our fund balance is strong. I think what was proposed last year was a cut our fund balance down a significant amount of money. I can't tell you that we would be in the same position that we were in right now if that would have passed. I think we would have been in a very different circumstance right now. And I think, I think you probably realize that. Without having that much money...
If that was my belief, I wouldn't have asked the question.
Well, but I do the math, okay? And at some point, we would have been pretty close to an Easton, closer to an Alton. And so I think we've been able to maintain that balance by looking at spending. And everybody seems to forget, and I think this is full of brought up two years ago, when the economy tanked, we went for employees, they gave, they had salary freeze, but at the same time, we also stopped spending that year. We saved $2 million that year, and here we are. That's what I like to think, that we've used money in health analysis budget from money that we saved by not spending about two years ago.
You mentioned that Common Core costs would be, are impacted into the budget. If by some chance, I know Governor Horvitz at least slowed the implementation of Common Core in the state, and there is some talk that the state legislature may torpedo it. We'll see whether or not that happens. What impact does that have on the budget, assuming that those costs went away?
At this point, I have to say it's labor cost. I know we...
Well, I think that's mainly not true.
Mr. Stolz, would you allow the superintendent to answer your question first before you enter your political commentary?
Oh, I don't think that's... That's a question. Go ahead, Dr. Seidenberger.
Thank you. What I'm saying, I think it's more training time, more people writing curriculum in response than is the actual purchase of material. Because what I've said before is true. I don't think we're outside of maybe one particular textbook. We're not, we haven't purchased anything that is strictly aligned to Common Core. At this point, we haven't done that. In fact, our attitude is going forward, create digital material that gets us away from the textbook business. So to answer your question, I can't go with the one thing in the budget and say, if I take it out, Mr. Stolz is going to save us $37,000. I think maybe someone was given the wrong impression because budget documents, we had $153,000 of some sort for textbooks that meet the Common Core. There are actually replacement textbooks that are...
We'd be getting them anyway.
We'd be getting them anyway. So I think maybe the labor costs are the real, and maybe some assessments that our teachers are developing, maybe some, some materials that might be in individual department budgets, maybe in the high school, but I have to go back and double check before I would eventually get. That's why I'm saying labor, for anybody else.
Last year, you and I actually had a discussion after the budget was passed. I didn't know this, and you had included, you had budgeted to have some money available for flexibility to have administrative payrolls. Have you budgeted funds for that purpose this year?
Yes, I have.
So what about?
I think a reasonable amount at this point, somewhere in the neighborhood of what we spent in past.
Yeah, not $70,000.
I'm not so sure as to put that out.
Okay. And the outlook for this budget, I know you, this is actually a matter of confidence. You look down the road and you're budgeting this year to see what we need next year. If Lehigh County Commissioners should not approve the maintenance process yet, and if they should then decide to not build there, has that possibility in fact affected this budget? Or are you relying on...
We have, we have $0 in effect in this budget. Zero.
And you're, and this budget prepares us down the road should we not get those funds?
I start, well, here's my answer. There's a lot of factors that play here. Number one, I don't want to stay Asian, I don't know if the feds are going to clean up and sequestration. I have no idea, I have no idea how many students are going to come in here. I have no many, I have no idea how many specialized students or staff we're going to need, but like anything else, we're going to take on a challenge come July 2nd. No much. I don't think any superintendent will can tell you that I'm totally confident we have enough funds. In fact, the comment I was going to make, no offense to Mrs. Donche's, is, you know, everyone, and I appreciate the nice comments, and I think you do compliment me in some degree.
Yeah, you and I have our struggles, but I was...
I think you said enough times, Whisker, that I think you are conservative to me, that I know you mean it. And we really don't. But, you know, Mr. Stolz, the hard thing with this job is I just don't control all the pieces of the puzzle. And that drives a guy like me crazy. When you think you have something settled, something new comes up. And what I'm trying to make is, we could be all happier today, and I could have a family trip with Smoove tomorrow. Each one of those kids costs $250,000. By the way, I've had that happen to me. So I don't know. Certainly, the fifth gives us a nice little insurance policy. Is it going to make a difference? Absolutely not. I'm not going to look me in the eye and say, you know, $232,000 next year's budget. If we got that, I can tell you what I'd do with it. It's not going to have an impact in this budget. I'd probably come back and recommend that if we put it in some kind of reserve account for a rainy day, I would just go tell like Mr. Mohn, as much as I respect him, hey, enough for $232,000 below on computer stuff. I would just look around and see what our needs are.
He's a pretty conservative guy. I don't think he'd ever blow money, but I...
Well, I'm just trying to tell you what I'd do with the money now. If the fifth passes, then we can sit and look at $595,000 estimate and see how that plays in the overall revenues. First, I'll give you an example. I mean, this year, and I think when we presented the budget, we talked about the impact of that one new, the one new warehouse that's going up over the quarry road. That's going to give us about $400,000 income. And I hear all sorts of rumors about what Mr. Jandl may or may not build, what he may or may not have sold, who he sold it to already. So I'm just like everyone else. But if he builds warehouses, and that, some of those things may be phased before the end of 2014, we'd like to know about that because that would have an impact on what we do going forward. On the other hand, I don't know what's going to happen with the developer, Mr. Coes, Mr. and Mrs. Coes, K O Z, 100 homes. What are they going to be like? I have no idea. But all of a sudden, I've got to wonder, how many kids are going to be coming into Albertus next year? Yes, we have space, and thank God we planned that space, but what kind of students are they going to be? What kind of things are going to happen? I don't know that. And right now, that's a big source of concern. So one of the things that I do when I come back into conferences, I call the Coes and sit down and say, well, first of all, tell me about the kind of housing you're going to build, so maybe I can project how many students we may or may not serve. Same, same with the Ammon Road project. 250 people tell me, wow, it's not the kind of apartments. Well, like I said before, I'll believe it when I see it. People are transitory right now, and I'm willing to bet we pick up some students here. Again, which will put pressure on Albertus, that before we know it, we're going to be back in the planning mode. And I talked about some flexibility with Mr., with Mr. Glancy's budget, professional services. I may have to come back to you sometime in October, November next year and say, you know what? As good as Dr. Palmer does demographics, if you go to State Department, go to BDE, they're going to go and accept her, her demographic numbers. We're going to have to go out and hire a demographer, come in here and look at what future trends are going to be. We may have to do that as early as next year if these, if these developments get approved. So that could have an impact on the budget next year. I just know one thing, costs are not going to go down if I go out next year, and I'm going to be, position this district to deal with it. I'd love to have no tax increase next year. I'm not going to predict that at all.
So, if I may summarize what you just said, even if we don't get, if whatever reason it doesn't go through this budget, still puts us on the correct trajectory for going into next year.
It positions us better than...
If we get it, then...
If we have cuts, I think it becomes more challenging, to be honest with you.
And I'm just going to close off with one final, shall we say, suggestion going into the future. I tend to agree with Mr. Ballard, the correct way for us to deal with the half-day Wednesday issue that keeps coming up is to put together a budget that would basically put that up to referendum, we vote on it, we all decide as a community. That's a conversation that needs to be had. And so are class sizes. So it suggests that perhaps next year, you put together an option that would include a budget that would hire enough teachers to get our class sizes down to an acceptable level, certainly under 30 for some of the older kids, hopefully under 25 for the younger ones, and let the school board know about that and have that discussion as to...
I can give you that calculation by August, what that will cost. You don't need a referendum. I'll give you a calculation and the numbers will be started.
That's fine, but we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to raise taxes to that level.
That's exactly, that's exactly the reality.
Right. That's why I said I'd like to, I'd like us to see what it costs, maybe put it up for referendum and have that discussion because we have to do something. That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? None appearing, I'm going to make my comments. One of the joys of being a teenager in high school during the sixties, early sixties, unfortunately, was the fact that our social studies class was required by state law to take a section on something that was labeled propaganda. Remember, we were still fighting the Cold War, and we had to combat communism.
Remember, we were still fighting the Cold War, and we had to combat communism, and we had to understand how the communist takeover was going to be fired, fueled by propaganda. So we had to do a whole section during that period on propaganda and what the techniques of propaganda were. And that stood me in fairly good stead when I went on the debate team and got some formal training in how you're supposed to present your case to make the strongest point, and to some extent, that's, uses a number of propaganda techniques. And I've been distressed, bothered and worried by what I see as some major propaganda techniques being used in this discussion. It starts out with the usual small stuff. You want to demonize your opponent, so like Mr. Stoltz in his blogs, you label everybody as edocrats who opposes your predictive position. Or you label fund balance as excess funds, completely putting out the false idea that there's excess money out there that just floating around can be used for anything. It's excess. But two of the techniques that were very, very prominent in that class were how do you approach an opponent and get them off of their game? And the strategy used in the propaganda sense at that point was called the ambush. What it is, is you try to present to your opponent some new set of quote facts, or some new thought, or some new process. When they haven't had a chance to look at the material ahead of time, they have no idea what you're talking about, and you're attempting to make them look foolish by producing this stuff at the last minute when they have no chance to analyze it, or rebut it, or anything else unless they happen to maintain a wealth of facts themselves that they can handle. It's not a lot of people can't do that. So you have the ambush. And in this particular situation, I feel that we've been ambushed. This is the last possible meeting without organizing a special meeting that we can have to approve a budget, and we find out about proposed cuts to the budget factually only in this meeting. Despite the request to provide these justifications and rationalizations two weeks ago, we didn't get them. We only got a smattering of some data indicating there was going to be some presentation on this particular thing, but no facts, no rationale, nothing we could review ahead of time, just bare account numbers and dollar numbers thrown out at the last possible minute. And there's figures thrown out on a blog at the last possible minute that were not brought up before the board, were not sent to the board, were not discussed with the board, were not discussed with the administration. None of these cuts were described, discussed with the administration ahead of time, nothing. This was a classic propaganda ambush. Okay? And I'll go into that in a little further, in a little bit.
Point of order, Mr. Ballard, you're attacking an amendment that's not even on the table.
Mr. Stoltz, would you please keep your comments to yourself? There's nothing, there's nothing going on about attacking an amendment. We're talking about the presentation that was made tonight. I'm fully capable and allowed to comment about a presentation that was made to the board. Whether you like my comments or not, you're going to hear them. Then, there's another propaganda technique that keeps getting thrown up in front of me, and I am just incensed to have to deal with it, and it's what's called the big lie. And actually, this was defined in 1925 by a person you might have heard about, wrote a book called Mein Kampf. Name was Adolf Hitler. And he defined it as a lie so colossal that no one would believe someone could have the impudence to distort the truth so famously. And what we have here is the start of the presentation of the big lie. There are 841,000, there are 900,000, there's $1 million worth of cuts in this budget that we are depriving the taxpayers of their funds by having this money out there in excess that we could have returned to the taxpayers. This is a big lie. We've heard that many of the so-called proposed cuts from both sources are illegal. You can't do them. People can be fined and go to jail for trying to make those kinds of cuts. We've seen misinterpretation of data from year to year. When you have a zero-based budget, it doesn't matter what the previous year was, you budget for what they're going to spend this year. You have to justify it this year. You have to provide facts this year. It doesn't matter a bit what happened last year. In fact, most of the categories we talk about don't go from year to year in some kind of orderly progression. They just go in whatever they happen to be and whatever happens to be. If we have to replace certain equipment this year, it is what we have to do this year. That's what we have to justify. You don't go on the basis of what happened in the past because as you'll recall from any of you who do any investing, there's this big statement that's always made at the bottom of every one of these prospectuses that says that the historical results are no guarantee of future success. And there's a reason for that. So what do we have? We have statements that we have historically over budgeted. No basis in fact for that, other than the fact that funds weren't expended. That, as anybody will tell you, correlation does not imply causation. You cannot say that the reason why those expenditures were not up to the budget was because we over budgeted, historically over budgeted. And there's been no proof of that. Calling in reduction savings is also another misuse of the terms that are out there. So why do I believe that there's an ambush? Why do I believe there's a big lie out there? Well, we saw all these historical data. We saw a spreadsheet printout that was handed out at the last meeting. Requested the spreadsheet, requested backup data, got nothing. Those numbers are historical. They've been going on for weeks, if not months. Why couldn't we have had them so everybody had the same data? Could look at it. Maybe if there was something in there that was reasonable, we could agree to it. No, this was an ambush attempt. Nothing clearer to me than that. It was an ambush attempt. And I don't like public policy being decided by ambush. I'm tired of those kinds of tactics. If the principles are so noble, you don't need to do that kind of activity. You should be able to put your ideas out in the public forum and make the case and convince people. This is not a game. We do not score points, political or otherwise. We are here dabbling in the lives of people, both on the staff and in the public, affecting in their wallets, affecting in the quality of their education, affecting them in many different ways. This is a serious business. We don't conduct ambushes. And I, like I said, the fact that we could not get any of this information ahead of time for the board to consider, and in particular, for the administration to consider. Where's the consideration for the fact that we have a hardworking staff that's put in hundreds of hours trying to get this budget straightened out, and we can't have the courtesy to give them an advanced copy of our thoughts and ideas so they can come back with their thoughts and ideas? Baloney. That's not discourse, that's ambush. Trying to put people in an untenable position with no facts behind them so your pseudo-facts look better. I'm sorry, that's an ambush. And I'll point out that, just as a numerical thing, if you take the $1.57 million we might be able to raise next year as possible revenue, subtract the 500K that we've already indicated might be needed to be used up for the debt service, and then subtract 840K or more of so-called cuts of excess funds, the big lie, there's only 160K left or so. Wait a minute, folks. That's putting us into a budget situation that's even more untenable than before. And here's the other thing that disturbs me. There are, there is a group out there who's put forth something they call the alternative budget strategy. And the alternative budget strategy is exactly this kind of thing that was shown up here on, on the screen. It's an organization called the Pennsylvania School Boards Coalition. It is sponsored by an organization called Leadership for Liberty, and as far as I can determine, it's almost two people for the entire organization, but we, you know, I don't care. But again, this particular situation of coming up with last-minute pseudo-cuts labeled as excess funds, saying that this money is just out there because we didn't spend it last year, this is a tactic that's being pushed by this group. And I'm sorry, but if it looks like a snake, it hisses like a snake, and bites like a snake, it's a snake in the grass as far as I'm concerned. And that's what I think this whole situation is. And I am literally incensed that we have to go through this kind of crap in the school district, the quality of East Penn. If you have an idea, you bring it forth. You don't hide it under a rock and spring it on people. If you have a thought process, you come to the administration and say, I, I think we could save money by doing this, and they can argue with you, and if you don't like that, you can say, hey, I argued it with them, they knew about it, I've been bringing it up, here it is, we're all, you know, we'll put it out in the public and see if it gets any more traction. That is reasonable. Spring surprises on the administration. Putting things in the last minute of the last hour of the last day of budget approval is ambushing. Putting out a big statement, as I expect to see, that there was this hidden money in the East Penn budget that the edocrats failed to return to the taxpayers is the big lie. And like I said, and I'm, I'm incensed that this kind of thing is occurring in what should be a professional and collegial organization of people who are supposed to be, like most of us, aiming for the support and preservation of public education, and trying to do our best for all of our constituencies, not just the taxpayers, not just the students, not just the parents, everybody, as best we can balancing off their needs. This is not a place where we should be engaging in these kind of maneuvers. And as I said, if the, if the cause was so noble, if the cause was so just, if the thought was so righteous, shouldn't have to do any of this. It should be possible to bring forth the arguments in time for everybody to look at them and review them and have a reasoned discussion on the matter. But this kind of stuff has got me angry, and I have restrained myself for a large portion of this year, and I have reached my limit. We get more? You have not seen me in full-on debate mode. And I'll tell you, you don't want to see me in full-on debate mode. So I want to request that if we want to continue in a reasonable fashion to fashion the policies and future of this district, that we do it on the basis of we are going to be open and honest and transparent, which none of those techniques that I mentioned before have been. So we'll go on for the second round of comments, and we'll see what else we can stir up. Mr. Stoltz?
I think it's more than a little bit necessary that I respond to your comments, sir. You're a hypocrite as well as a liar. For you to complain about me referring to as an edocrat and then compare Ms. Donches and myself first to Kristof's Russia and then to the National Socialist Party in Germany, that's hypocrisy, sir. For you to say that we need to man up and woman up and present our cuts to the board, and then when we do, you call us Nazis, more than a little bit critical, sir. Ms. Donches provided you with her first draft cuts two weeks ago, which you said in your speech didn't happen. She provided all of us proposed cuts two weeks ago. So next time you gather me down for saying that I'm casting aspersions on my fellow board members, I'll be more than happy to remind you that you compared me to Adolf On another note entirely, Leadership for Liberty, as best I can tell, is run by one person. As you could go on their website and check anytime, they are not big fans of mine, nor I of theirs. Please do not associate with them. I really hope that at some point later in this meeting, you're not going to ask the board to vote on something that we've only just received tonight, and I'll, I'll let it go with that. Thank you.
Yes, before I make my other comments, I would like to amend the budget motion to incorporate the budget reductions as outlined in my handout.
I'm waiting for a second, Mr. Stoltz. If there's no second, the motion dies.
Let me just make my comments. So I have a lot of respect for the staff, and I think that those that work with me or know me know that I have a lot of respect for what they do. The reason I don't come to talk to the administration is because I'm a firm believer that the public business should be done in public. We don't have a budget and finance committee. We don't have working committees like other schools do, where they would be talking about the budget and discussing our cuts, or reductions, or ideas, or hearings, why, or what different changes mean or mean. This is the forum that we have to bring our public discussion about our public business. And as much as Mr. Ballard doesn't like that, they need to continue to do that. I work for the taxpayer, and they have a right to hear what we're discussing. Another reason I have to bring these questions up is because we don't get accurately, we don't get the information, I don't get the information that I would like. If I had the charge account code number on the check summary sheet, I would have enough information to answer these questions on my own. And it's my board members who have kept me from getting the information that I need. I don't really care if everybody else wants it or not. I would like it. It would have been very helpful, and I would not be here, you know, without all of the information I need. I too am very concerned about the poverty circumstances increasing. I've been watching this in the nutrition newsletter with the three reduced subjects, and that increase, it's a trajectory, it's a steep trajectory, and I worry about that. I was interested in Mr. Glancy's comments on the tariffs on the buildings. We should be done out of capital projects. If we need to transfer money into capital projects, come before us and ask us to put the capital project money into capital projects, not to spend it on the budget lines or the fund balance. The strong fund balance that we're told about all the time in standard and core... The strong fund balance that we're called about all the time in standard and core, when I'm asked, really, what does that number need to be? How many more dollars do we have to increase that to make it stronger, to go up a rating? What if we... How much does it... If we block it by so much, how much do we come down remaining? I have never gotten a straight answer on that from the PFAM or whatever. It's not fair. I don't get the answer. How much does that really matter? It really matters more on the risks with the... How much do they think the taxpayer consumes? That's what that is all about. It has nothing to do with the fund balance. There are schools that have no fund balance that can get bonds if they need them. As far as information and time, there are many, many, many things that we've got on in the pack of nursing things that we need to know and let them know. And a lot of that information, we all know, takes a lot of time to go through. I've spent hours, days, months, whatever, making lots of spreadsheets to understand, really, the budget. And I have a pretty good handle on it. And as far as the last minute, there were changes last meeting. I put together my whole presentation, and then there were changes Thursday, and I had to redo my presentation. There could be changes tonight. I was actually sort of relieved to hear Dr. Seidberg say that this budget worries him a little. Because we are a government agency, and we should be worried about every dollar that gets spent. And we should have that feeling of edginess. Of what if we do this? What if we don't do that? And I know that you do. I know that your staff worries about it. But I was glad to hear you say it, because so often, oh, we're a fortunate district. No, it's almost like we don't have to worry. There's a lot of money that needs to happen. And we know when things coming down, whether it be the building, whether it be the pension, whether it be the transportation, whether it be the cuts of de-questration or whatever, we know it's tougher ahead, and we need to keep that austerity mentality. And I think people need to know, and I'm so glad that we have this public forum, so that people do know how bad things can get. This is a tough economy time. It's up to you to talk about recovery. There's no recovery happening there, out there, here, anywhere.
Have you finished yet, Ms. Donches?
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Anyone else wish to make a comment on the motion that's on the floor?
I just want to respond. You really answered your own question. This is the last couple of comments you made about why we maintain a healthy fund balance. And the answer's very simple. Because we maintain viability, because we maintain flexibility, because we maintain program, and we live up to the expectations that our parents and citizens have of this school district. I think you've answered your question so many words. And thank you for the comment. I don't sleep a lot at nights. My staff will tell you. I've been erect the last three weeks. I'm erect every year with a budget, because it is an awesome responsibility. And I think maybe here's where we part ways. It almost sounded like I interfered with your budget process. Let's get this clear. I think the right term is you went out and created something on your own. I made changes that we do normally. I'm sorry you got away with your presentation, but I somehow think my role was to create the budget. Yours certainly to question me, put me through the wringer. That's something I'm used to having, but creating the document was my responsibility. That's my role. And to have you say, "Well, I made changes that messed up your presentation," I'll never apologize for that, because I did my job. And my staff did their job. We let everybody know two weeks ago we were going to make changes based on a new teaching position. I mean, so I'm never going to apologize for that. And you are invited in to sit down and talk to me. And part of my job is to communicate with the board members. And all my sitting down, you can ask all the questions you want. We'll give you all the time you need. But I really believe that there's a misstep here when, despite your beliefs, public forum or not, there's a matter of respect. Two people working together that you could have called me a month ago, and I'm sure this wasn't a new idea, picked up the phone and said, "I had some ideas about some changes. Come on in, let's talk about it." You could have spent time... My staff and I could have gathered that information. I mean, I did not enjoy tonight being put in a spot where I've got to remind you that a $2,000 object is a big deal to a lot of parents. And they worked hard for that swimming program. And yeah, they knew about that cut. Because I had to make a call to some people about that cut. And that's not the way it should happen. You should be put in that position, and neither should the administration.
Okay? Any other further comments? Mr. Earnshaw?
Two quick ones. First of all, I found that the only way I learn is by asking questions. And so I would certainly encourage all of my fellow board members, if you have questions about things, don't just present some idea in public. Ask questions first. You won't get turned away. I've never been, even when I've been at odds with a previous superintendent. She never said, "I'm not going to talk to you or answer your question." She was always willing to talk to me. And second of all, the statement, "I represent the taxpayers," that's incorrect. We represent the entire citizenry of the East Penn School District, not just the taxpayers, but everyone who lives here. That's what a representative form of government in the public is. If you represent only the people who pay taxes, you are not fulfilling your duty as an elected official to represent all of the citizens of this school district. Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. So anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Mr. Polacano?
I would like to thank both Lynn Donches and Dr. Seidberg for their efforts. I think Dr. Seidberg is right. When I had proposals, I went, invited him to sit in his office and we discussed things, and it worked out very well. And maybe if you'd done that, it might have come up with the good gifts that might have earlier used to them. But I think what he did was open up to the public what goes on in the budget more. By having Dr. Seidberg respond to some of the things, we learned that there are a lot of things that are going to be coming up with that budget that we didn't know before. I think, I mean, a lot of people are right. I think that was important. But I think what he did was educational, too. It's just that there were a couple of board members that would probably do the foot down of the board, but the wrong speed, but that's the name of the game, I guess. And I'm not... I don't like to do that. I'm very quiet. Got to see this person most of the time. And in fact, that's urgent on the board. Dr. Seidberg also said in the mail, he responds right away. It's worked out fine. And I want to thank them again for the zero percent cut. Thank you. After that, through the whole years I've been on the board, finally back. Well, I appreciate that. And again, thanks Lynn for great effort. I gave a lot of time, and effort was put in today. And it was important. Put it back down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Stoltz?
I think I can say with a good amount of certainty, I promise we will listen to them today. Ms. Donches, I appreciate all the hard work that you put into your presentation. I'm afraid that some of your cuts were too radical even for me. For example, I wouldn't cut things like equipment and supplies or items from pupil health unless you were in extreme fiscal crisis and had no other options. This was a very informative discussion that we had though from the public, and I think that Lynn did the right thing by making her presentation there in public, rather than just submitting questions to the administration in advance, because I'm sure that everyone here learned what a lot of those various line items meant as well. And I think that maybe a lot of this could have been saved if the information that Lynn Donches has been requesting right very long and has been denied her at every turn would have been provided to her. She would have known, I would have had a better idea. I think I can say with a safe amount of certainty that she wanted that information for herself, not to spread to Leadership for Liberty or any other organization. Not... Leadership for Liberty is not the only organization or the only individual that supports cutting taxes and presenting alternate budget. If we were able to support some of the cuts tonight and made a motion to extend the rules and not others, I certainly would have voted for some of your cuts, and I probably would have presented some of mine. As I found out, about $200,000, my cuts are borderline illegal, so I'm not going to make that proposal, and there's maybe $80,000 for the rest tonight. That's not... Realistically, that's not going to pass, so I'm not going to take the time to present it. But I think that we learned something going into the future about the budget process, and hopefully we'll be able to have some cuts next year and enough revenue that we can have a zero increase budget again, which is something that I've been pushing for for six years that I'm on the board. I'm very glad to see that we achieved that. As I said on my blog, in the past, I've changed my mind. Whoever may have originally said that, it doesn't matter. It's true. I'm sure that I'll be attacked on the right tomorrow by certain people who would say, "Stoltz chickens out, doesn't present budget cuts." But that's okay. That's part of being an elected official. And Mr. Ballard quoted me as saying last meeting, "We don't like the heat. Get out of the kitchen." Now they can turn the heat up to stop me at work and take pictures. I don't mind. I'm staying in the kitchen. Thank you.
Any other comments? Dr. Barker?
Although I know the hour's late, I just want to set the record straight. Nothing Mrs. Donches has asked or wrote that I'm aware of relevant to this budget has been denied her. Account numbers have to do with last year's budget. I just want to make that clear. Extending on last year's budget and has nothing to do as we... Dr. Seidberg went it out, we start from a zero base again this year. I suppose that's the record straight.
Mrs. Donches?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Polacano for your comment about bringing it out to the public, despite you don't know what you don't know. And therefore, I think, you know, people know what questions to ask if they have more information. I am curious, what is the anticipated fund balance at the end of this school year?
On the paper you received in your packet.
You're saying $11,000 at the beginning, plus 13, 14, 15? Is it anticipated fund balance?
Libs referring to 3-1 ending on the end of fund balance.
Right.
I think that was what it was anticipated starting the budget process. I got to the end. Right there.
On the table. What is it?
Okay. And then there's one other educational thing that I would like to know about, and that is, if I understand it correctly, we can only have a fund balance that is 8% of the non-committed funds?
That's a lottery. The state law is that we cannot have undesignedated fund balances that use 8%. Designated fund balance is something different. Undesignated fund balance is just uncommitted money that over the end of the year.
So the higher the operating balance, the greater the fund balance you have?
Yep. Okay. Anything else appearing? Ms. Virsul, will you call a roll on the two motions, which are the... Yeah, homestead and the budget as presented in the agenda.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polacano?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one nay.
All right. We have... Next item on the agenda is business operations. Item 6.1 is separated by a request of Ms. Donches. Can I have a motion on 6.1, please? Any discussion?
I would just mention, I would love to have the information, even though my board member voted it down, I am not getting the information on the check summation that I would like.
Ms. Virsul, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Hyde? Mr. Stoltz?
I'm standing.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Polacano? Ms. Fuller? Ms. Donches?
Standing.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Seven ayes, two nays.
Okay. Now we have items 2, 3, 4, and 5, I presume. Mr. Stoltz, from your comment, you want item number 6 held out?
Yep.
We'll move on to 2, 5. Is that a second? All right. Is there any discussion on items 2 through 5? Your business operations? None appearing. Ms. Virsul, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polacano?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Okay. Item number 6 under business operations on the agenda. So moved. Second. All right. Commentary, Mr. Stoltz?
I don't necessarily object to the new contract. In fact, I'm rather glad to say that we're keeping our lunch shovels and other lunch staff. I'm not going to be sexist about it. But I think that we owe it to the public to give them at least two weeks to review it, with a stern thought. We're making motions that are in my...
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
A movement in second defer to a specific meeting? I believe, unless we have a commentary on something that's pertinent, right? The priority of that motion, we should just vote on it. The motion is to defer item 6.6 to the next meeting.
Are there any consequences? Are there legal consequences or are there...
Contracted. Contract continues.
The current contract continues. We can get these savings.
The actual contract that we're working on now expires June 30th, and therefore, then we would be in a status quo state until the next board meeting. I think that's correct. I would note that the Food Crafters Union has already ratified this agreement. Any comment? Oh, I can't have a comment. Ms. Virsul, will you call a roll on deferring this item to the next meeting?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Ms. Donches? Ms. Donches?
No.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polacano?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
No.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
No.
Mr. Ballard?
No. All right, we will go on to the motion. Any further comments? None appearing, Ms. Burtz, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polacano?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Standing.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one abstention.
Okay, is there any new business to come before the board this evening? None appearing? We had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss real estate, personnel, negotiations, and legal matters. The next board meeting will be Monday, July 8th, right here in the boardroom, and that's the only announcement coming down in the next couple. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Seven seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.